Good afternoon. We call the meeting to order of the study session of the Newport Beach City Council, February 26, 2019. Madam Clerk.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Current business. Study session item number one, we'll have clarification of items on the consent calendar. Any comments from members of the council? Mr. Avery? Mr. Duffield? Mr. Muldoon? Ms. Brenner? Mr. Hurdman?
None.
Mayor Protem? All right. We'll move right into our business. We'd like to make a presentation to Emily Park, who is, exciting to say, the 2018 Newport Beach Junior Lifeguard of the Year. Where is Ms. Park? So, Lifeguard Captain Brian. Captain Brian O'Rourke has come forward, as has Lifeguard, Chief Lifeguard Mike Helfeit. Nice to see you both. And first, Captain O'Rourke will say a few words about Emily Park and give her a scholarship check and plaque. So, that's kind of good things to come. So, if you'd like to speak in, then I'll read the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor Dixon, council members. It's an honor to be here tonight to present our 2018 Junior Guard of the Year, Emily Park. This has been a tradition over the couple of years that we honor our Junior Guard of the Year from last year. Now, as we start our unofficial, sorry, start of Junior Lifeguards in the swim test, which is starting this weekend, March 3rd, and all of you are invited to come by. So, we're really excited about this. This is the 35th anniversary of the world's famous Junior Guard program, so we're very excited about that. A couple of things I would like to present. As you mentioned, I'd like to present Ms. Park with a check for $250 from the California State Life Saving Association that recognizes her. As our representative. And also, we would like, on behalf of the Newport Beach Fire Department, we would like to present Emily with this plaque that says, "2018 Junior Lifeguard of the Year, Emily Park for Outstanding Citizenship, Leadership, and Athletic Performance." And on that note, here you go, Emily. And on that note, I'd just like to say a couple of words about Emily. You know, we're really proud of you. Great job this year. This is going to be her seventh year in the program. She started when she's nine. She's going to finish out here when she's 16. Big picture, we believe she's going to go through Lifeguard tryouts next year and become one of our ocean lifeguards. Emily is someone who really wants to serve and protect our beaches, and she's demonstrated that time, time again throughout the program. She's an outstanding citizen. You know, I talked to her a little bit about how she, just before this, she's, you know, besides being in Junior Lifeguard, she stepped up and actually supports your libraries, and she's very active in that. So, that's really great. And she's an amazing competitor and also a leader, and she's helped with a really difficult, sensitive situation this summer. And she shows a lot of integrity, and I wouldn't be surprised one day, Mayor Dixon, if she's sitting up there serving this amazing community. So, with that, I'm going to present you, Ms. Park.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dan B. Dixon, Ms. Mayor. This is just a huge honor, and I can't believe that I'm just standing up here because doing Junior Guards, I didn't even expect to be recognized because just doing the program is just a safe space and just an amazing area where lots of kids from like all age groups and different types of backgrounds can just come together and learn about the ocean. And Junior Guards, if I didn't do it, I would probably drown at one point. Like, I was not a strong swimmer, and I was not like that brave and confident when I went in. And now, like Captain O'Rourke said, I'm gonna definitely try to be a Lifeguard, and even if I don't make it this year or next year, I'm always gonna try to do it because I love and support this so much. And I just appreciate how the council and the community has just been so supportive of everything that we do. And any bumps that we have ever reached in this like program, we've always gone over them with such compassion, and they listen to us. And it's just, there's just such a great connection with the instructors and everybody who does the program. So, just thank you so much.
Well, congratulations. So, I'd like to read, you deserve to hear all these wonderful things I'm going to say about you. So, if you would all listen to what Emily has accomplished. She was select, Emily Park was selected as the 2018 Junior Lifeguard of the Year for exemplifying the values of the Junior Lifeguard program. And Emily adhered to the three Rs: respectful, responsible, and representative. Always be respectful of yourself and others, and be responsible in all you do because as a Junior Lifeguard, you are representative of the city of Newport, of Newport Beach lifeguards. And whereas Emily's most prominent qualities are her dedication to the team, eagerness to learn, her work ethic, and a never quit attitude. She is enthusiastic to engage in any and all water activities. And Emily has demonstrated through her physical abilities, passion for the ocean, and remarkable character that she embodies what it means to be a Junior Lifeguard. She is polite and kind to instructors and Junior Lifeguards alike. And Emily's true skills shown through in a critical time when she was a safety aide for a sea buoy swim in large surf. Set waves were in the six-foot range, and Ms. Park safely escorted younger kids through the large surf and back to shore. This is a responsibility almost never asked of a Junior Lifeguard division. But Emily's demonstration of both a high level of responsibility and exceptional, exceptional skill in the water made her an ideal choice to support this event. And Emily, whereas Emily has been involved with the Newport Beach Junior Lifeguard program since she was nine years old, just amazing. Despite not being a traditional water athlete, she excels in anything water-related, from ocean swims to paddles. She was a consistent top-three finisher in all competition events, including the Monster Mile event, which entails a one-mile run and a one-mile swim. Her grit and determination, paired with her leadership and good sportsmanship, make her a shining example for her colleagues, her younger Junior Lifeguards, and our community. And now, therefore, I, Diane Brooke Dixon, Mayor of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby commend Emily Park for being 2018 Junior Lifeguard of the Year. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Girls Soccer Team for clinching the league championship. And we have Principal Sean Bolton and Coach Justin Schroeder. And if you would come and tell us what great things your team did.
Mrs. Mayor Dixon, city council members, distinguished guests of the city of Newport Beach, thank you for honoring our girls soccer team here. Emily Park, by the way, is a Newport Harbor High School sailor and a member of our girls' soccer team as well. So, it's quite an afternoon for Newport Harbor here at city council.
That's fantastic.
Justin Schroeder is a third-year teacher in Newport Mesa. He's a second-year teacher at Newport Harbor High School. He's an educator first and a coach second, and that translates to a lot of success in the soccer field. I think what's emblematic of our girls' soccer team this year is that we played one of the toughest teams in the state and the country in Los Alamitos, which is a league member of ours, in the quarterfinals of our girls' soccer season. And although we were down 2-0, the girls didn't give up, and we almost scored twice in the last five minutes with some incredible passing, with incredible shots on goal, some incredible saves in the goal by our goalie to keep us in the game. And our girls just never gave up. And again, that's emblematic of our team, of our school, and what we're all about at Newport Harbor High School. The cumulative GPA of our girls' soccer team is eye-popping 3.95. That's an incredible GPA. It's probably one of the highest team GPAs at Newport Harbor. Education-based athletics is alive and well because of this team. And girls' soccer's had a tough run at Newport Harbor. They haven't done very well in the past, but this team kind of cemented its place in CIF on the soccer map and in the region as one of the premier programs and an up-and-coming program for many, many reasons. So, we are very proud of our girls' soccer team. Thank you for honoring them here because it's well-deserved. And I couldn't be prouder as an educator, as a principal at Newport Harbor High School, of the group of young women you have before you that represent our school and our team. Thank you.
Thank you. Coach, did you want to say a few words? Go ahead, please. Coach?
Sean said I had to. Thank you for having us here, Mayor and city council members. Yeah, you know, I'm not a community member, but being part of the school, being a part of Newport Harbor, having the season, I really did feel the community really rallied around us this year. I feel almost, it really should probably be the girls up here talking. It's nothing really I did necessarily. It was kind of all them this year. It was a great bunch of kids that just bought into everything, and I'm so proud of them. And, you know, going forward, you know, hopefully this isn't the last time we're up here talking to you guys. Maybe we have a little bit more championship hardware and a few more academic awards here and there. But thank you for having us. This is awesome, I know. You know, it's something most of us haven't done, so appreciate it.
We're happy to welcome you back every year. You've earned it. Let me read the proclamation, please. Whereas Newport Harbor High School girls' soccer team won the outright wave league title this year, and this was the first time the Sailors girls' soccer team has won the league title in school history. And the Sailors ended their season as quarterfinalists in the CIF SS Division One after defeating Mission Viejo and Santa Margarita, which marked the only, only the second time in school history that the Sailors girls' soccer team finished as quarterfinalists. And the Sailors girls' soccer team ended up ranked 52nd in the entire nation. Wow. And the Sailors girls' soccer team was led by Coach Justin Schroeder and finished an impressive 18-3-6. 18 wins, three losses, and six ties. Now, therefore, I, Diane Brooke Dixon, Mayor of the city of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby recognize the Newport Harbor High School girls' soccer team. Congratulations. And joining me will be Mayor Protem, Will O'Neill, coming down. He has some little gifts for you, and we'll take your picture. Now, this next item is an item that brings immense pride to all of us, and I'm sure all of us will be speaking. We're going to be recognizing the Newport Beach Police Department for the successful investigation, conclusion of their investigative work in the Linda Ann O'Keefe case. If we'll have members of the department, past and present, and other city representatives are here, as I understand. So, Chief Lewis, it is a tremendous opportunity to brag a lot about our Newport Beach Police Department for job well done. And it's hard to even put words to what you folks have done. And the chief knows this, and I certainly want to encourage all members up here to speak, certainly during this presentation. I was in New York last week, not knowing that this was going to break, and with my three grandsons. And the news, the national news, was profound, was tremendous, that you really, you, all of you, ladies and gentlemen, put Newport Beach on the map for crime fighting and doing the right thing for public safety in our community. I could not be more proud. And I was grateful that Councilmember Avery was able to attend the news conference at the District Attorney's Office. And you were on national news. You were on NBC Nightly News, Chief Lewis. And you also were Deputy Chief. You were also on, you were standing up there. So, I will turn it over to you and whoever else you want to speak, Chief. And I know my colleagues will want to be talking as well. So, please tell us how we're doing.
Certainly. Mayor Dixon, John Lewis, your Chief of Police. And you said it in the simplest of terms, that we couldn't be more proud of these individuals, and that truly is the case. This case, it's touched the lives of this community and its members for over 45 years. And I know Mr. Avery's heartfelt comments in that press conference really, truly reflect how we feel about Linda and her story, and never giving up on these cases, and remembering our victims, and continuing to fight for them. And these are the ones that did the work. People like me stand up at press conferences and get some attention for this, but I am certainly not the one that put this case together. It was these individuals here, and I can't tell you how extraordinarily proud I am to serve with them. And I think that when you look at this case, too, there's, there's a lot that goes into an investigation like this, particularly when you're talking about handling the logistics of multiple search warrant executions, arrest warrant executions, and you're playing across the country, halfway across the country, inclement weather. I mean, there's story after story about just the dedication of these folks, time away from their families, long, long days, and just a never-give-up fight to get this case to where it is. And they're just extraordinary people. I mean, just extraordinary public servants, and I'm so grateful, again, to serve with them. And I know, as a community, we can be very proud of their efforts. But I also think it's important, too, is that we couldn't do this without this council's and with our city manager's commitment to our, to our police department and also to our cold case investigations. And again, I mean, we've, we've come a long way with this case, and there's certainly more to follow. But again, as you mentioned, I'm sincerely proud of all my colleagues here and the work that they've done.
Could you please introduce each of them, please? We'd like to know them.
So, Deputy Chief Jay Short, Lieutenant Steve Rasmussen, Sergeant Court DePwig, Detective Mike Fletcher, Detective Rick Henry, Detective Jason Prince, Detective Kelly Maslin, Detective Marie Gamble, Detective Brian McMahon, and Detective Mike Dugan.
Well, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, officers. It's a tremendous honor to recognize you, and thank you for the service that you give to our community and to crime victims everywhere, to know that there is hope, and bring a case like this that apparently you hadn't forgotten, and that is what brings hope to so many. So, why don't I open it up to my colleagues? Mayor Protem, would you like to begin with some comments?
Yeah, you can't help but reflect on the fact that last year, Chief, you came in and talked about historic lows in crime in 2018. Well, 2019 has started where you've actually broken a case in our city's history. And I just have to say, congratulations to all of you. That's a real achievement because we, these cases just aren't forgotten because we don't forget the victims, and you've shown that. So, congratulations.
Mr. Avery.
Policing has just gotten so much more complicated and complex for all officers, and we're well aware of that today with everything that's going on. And I think this is just, this case was just another example of the excellence of the department to bring this in, is a reflection of using the social media and all the forensics, all the work. It just culminates in something like this. Truly excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Brenner?
I'd also like to add my thanks, and I don't know if any of you are old enough to be on that case back then, but I remember the day. And I was a young newlywed, and I remember standing at my Dutch door on Marguerite when one of the Newport Beach police officers came to the door and told us about the case and told us that they were looking for her. And I attribute that to my being an overprotective mother my entire life because it had such an impact on all of us in our community. We couldn't believe that this was happening in our sleepy little town. And after this, we have some comments by the Coronet Omar Residents Association. One of our members, Ron Yeoh, was the man who found the body that day, or that, I'm not sure if it was that day. But anyway, Ron will be speaking later, and we cannot say thank you enough for all of your hard work. We appreciate you more than you can know.
Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you. This is an interesting lineup, not typical lineup you expect. You're now on the other side. I'd like to identify any retired individuals in this lineup. Retired from Long Beach, and what if that goes? Excellent. So, you come to the city, you look through old cold case files, and you look for leads or new information. Well, thank you for your continued service in Newport Beach, and I wanted to draw attention to your, I figured you were retired based on how casually dressed you are. And you look, I won't say that, but you look well-slept, too. I would like to thank you for that and for ensuring your continuing legacy. And I'd like to thank our law enforcement here locally. You are leaving a legacy, and for those who don't know someone in law enforcement, have family in law enforcement, it genuinely is a calling. It's like going to military or the priesthood. It is something that you're honored to do, is a very noble cause, and I thank you for honoring the city of Newport Beach in the memory of those who face unfortunate circumstances with your hard work and dedication, and congratulations on the job well done.
Mr. Duffield.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I was also around when this happened, and obviously, you know, it's something you don't forget. And in our town of Newport Beach, Balboa, it just doesn't happen. But, you know, I still can't figure out how you did it. I keep asking my wife now, how did they do that? And she tries to tell me, and then it whirled over my head. So, I don't know how you connected the dots. I'm gonna probably pass on trying to figure it out, but I'm just so proud and amazed that your stick-to-itiveness and your ability to put those dots together is just phenomenal. Great job. Thank you so much.
Mr. Hurdman.
Just, again, an outstanding job. Couple of consultants from Long Beach, would you mind sharing with us, because I'm following up on Duffy's curiosity? Is there, is there a key piece that brought this to closure? Or any of you wish to speak to that? Pardon?
Sergeant Court DePwig. Mr. Hurdman, I'm going to cede the mic to Sergeant Court DePwig. He's responsible for our current against person unit and very happy to speak to you, sir.
Thank you, council members. First of all, teamwork was absolute in this, and I think everybody recognizes that we didn't forget about Linda's case. As for how we came about it, new technology. DNA was collected back in 1973, which was, you know, for the last 45 years. The science behind DNA and how we can identify people has progressed so much, and we were patient. And in doing so, we took the necessary steps throughout last year, and we were able to get a break on new, a new, a new test that was out there in December of 2018, and we were able to put it together. So, along with the teamwork and the hard work by the investigators, along with the advancements in technology, we were able to obviously identify James Neal as the suspect.
So, this case sat cold for how long?
Well, it's been worked quite a bit over the last 45 years at different points. There's been investigators, civilian staff, retired investigators that have looked at this case at different, at different times throughout the last 45 years. So, yes, it was cold in the sense there was no viable leads, but we took a new approach, as you guys know, last year with the social media Twitter campaign that we did. And once we did that, it was to set the tone on what we knew was going to happen pretty quickly. And at the end of the day, the, the technology was there that our predecessors didn't have.
Yeah, incredible.
Once we were able to take advantage of that, we were able, obviously, able to identify our suspect.
Congratulations again.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for protecting all of us.
Thank the team, the absolute great work.
I just want to follow up with a question.
Yes, ma'am.
If you can answer it. So, the DNA evidence was, so that says a lot about how we protect evidence in the Newport Beach Police Department. So, that had been protected and contained for all those years?
Yes, ma'am. So, it was collected back in 1973, and it's, it has been maintained at the crime lab and in our property evidence freezer for 45 years. So, different tests have, have happened over the years, and different databases, we've uploaded in different databases over the years. But the technology, again, we were in the right place to take advantage of it.
We are so grateful. So, thank you all for your service to our community and to all victims of crime everywhere. That patience, tenacity, and a lot of expertise, I have to say, feeds into this. So, our thanks and gratitude. Thank you. I'd like to open it up also to members of the community for public comment on this item, if you'd like to come forward. As Ms. Brenner indicated, there's some members of the community that might like to speak. So, if you wouldn't mind continuing to stand, then, because I think the comments will be directed to you.
Good evening. I'm Paul Blank, and I'm the Treasurer of the Coronet Omar Residents Association. I'm here representing the Board of the Residents Association. I'd like to read into the record a letter of appreciation the Board has written from our President Debbie Stevens. Copies of this letter have been emailed to the city clerk, all of you, and to Chief Lewis's office. To Chief Lewis, current and past members of the Newport Beach Police Department, one of the goals of the Coronet Omar Residents Association is to protect, preserve, and improve the quality of life in Coronet Omar. There's no more important quality of life issue than public safety, and nothing more important than removing criminals from our streets. The capture of the murder of Linda O'Keefe is a great accomplishment for all members of the Newport Beach Police Department, both past and present. First, the initial investigators of the case had the great foresight to obtain and preserve important forensic material, some of which would prove to be valuable many years later, when scientific discoveries progressed to a sufficient level. Second, we applaud the persistence of the Newport Beach Police Department to continue the investigation throughout the years and not give up, even when leads had run out. Third, we congratulate the current members of the Newport Beach Police Department that used the most recent investigation techniques to track down Linda's killer. We are truly grateful to live in a community that places such a high priority on the protection of human life and bringing criminals to justice. The fact that the Police Department never gave up on a murder of a young girl is truly admirable. On behalf of the Coronet Omar Residents Association, we greatly appreciate the efforts of the Police Department over the past 46 years to bring justice to Linda O'Keefe and her family. And it's signed Debbie Stevens, who is the President of the Residents Association.
Well, thank you. Next, please.
Mayor, Councilperson. I just wanted to relate my thoughts.
Copies of this letter have been emailed to the city clerk, all of you, and to Chief Lewis's office. To Chief Lewis, current and past members of the Newport Beach Police Department, one of the goals of the Kornammar Residents Association is to protect, preserve, and improve the quality of life in Kornammar. There's no more important quality of life issue than public safety, and nothing more important than removing criminals from our streets. The capture of the murder of Linda O'Keefe is a great accomplishment for all members of the Newport Beach Police Department, both past and present. First, the initial investigators of the case had the great foresight to obtain and preserve important forensic material, some of which would prove to be valuable many years later, when scientific discoveries progress to a sufficient level. Second, we applaud the persistence of the Newport Beach Police Department to continue the investigation throughout the years and not give up, even when leads had run out. Third, we congratulate the current members of the Newport Beach Police Department that used the most recent investigation techniques to track down Linda's killer. We are truly grateful to live in a community that places such a high priority on the protection of human life and bringing criminals to justice. The fact that the police department never gave up on a murder of a young girl is truly admirable. On behalf of the Kornammar Residents Association, we greatly appreciate the efforts of the police department over the past 46 years to bring justice to Linda O'Keefe and her family. And it's signed Debbie Stevens, who is the president of the residents association.
Well, thank you. Next, please.
Mayor, Councilperson. I just wanted to relate my thoughts and appreciation and
What is your name?
Ron Yo. And I'm glad you followed Winston Churchill's favorite line of never, ever, ever, ever give up. Thank you.
Any other, any other comments from members of the public? All right. Well, thank you again, and this, we should declare this is Newport Beach Police Department Day, so thank you, thank you so much for all you do. Now, our next and final item in study session, the Newport Beach Water Supply and System Update. And staff, Mr. Voko Shevich?
Top that. Yeah, yeah.
That's probably the 85th version. Please
Very good, yeah, thank you.
Please give us your input.
Thank you, Mayor, and Mayor Protem and City Council. We have a brief presentation to you tonight regarding our water system and an update about our supply and system that I think you'll find informative. And we also have some speakers I'll introduce here in just a moment. You've seen this slide before. It's in the record here for the public in terms of our water system, about 26,000 service connections or customers, and 300 miles of pipelines, and all of our reservoirs and pump stations, and our portfolio of water, which mainly comes from groundwater. And our groundwater comes from four water wells that the city drilled in the 90s up in Fountain Valley, and these are of the utmost importance to our wells, to our water supply, and they pump anywhere from 3,000 to 6,000 gallons per minute and put in high-quality water into our system. And I'd like to ask, so we're a member agency for the Orange County Groundwater Basin, and I've invited the Orange County Groundwater District to come and give us a brief update about the system and our current water supply situation. So now I'd like to call up Mike Marcus, the general manager, and Director Steve Sheldon to come on up, please.
Thank you very much. My name is Steve Sheldon, and it's been my pleasure to serve the city of Newport Beach as a director of the water district for the past 13 years. And I'll introduce Mike Marcus, our general manager. Mike is our general, he's our general manager? Thank you. We just have a few minutes to make our presentation, and I'm also a resident here in Newport Beach. This is a map of the Orange County Water District. It's all of basically north and central Orange County, everything from Irvine north. We were formed back in 1933 by Act of the, Act of the Legislature to protect the groundwater, and folks that have been involved in our board, you may have heard the name of Sagerstrom. He was one of the past presidents of our board, Henry Sagerstrom, and one of the founders of the water district his family. The basin serves 19 municipalities in special districts. The Irvine Ranch Water District is one of those districts and 2.5 million people, and we do supply 77% of the drinking water for Newport Beach. A good part of that water comes from our groundwater replenishment that Mr. Marcus will touch on. This is the aquifer, and I can go into a lot of detail, but essentially, this is where the groundwater is and how we refill and recharge the aquifer. As was mentioned, your, the city of Newport gets its water from Fountain Valley, and that happens in many other jurisdictions. In Irvine, they receive a large amount of their water there in San Ana off Dire Road and the 55. We call the Dire Road production wells. Again, I just touched on the mix of the water that's imported from the Colorado River and from the Delta versus the local supply of groundwater. Next, there you go. I want to have Mike, Mike was the contractor or the, the general manager that built this, and so he's now our, our general manager, and this is what he knows really well, and I'd like him to talk about it.
Oh, thank you very much, Eric Sheldon. And just to be clear, when we say that the city of Newport Beach has wells in Fountain Valley, that's true. The reason that's true is because we are a non-adjudicated groundwater basin, so anyone can put a well anywhere within the county and pump water out of it and deliver it to their constituents. And we are governed by a 10-member board of directors also, of which Director Sheldon serves this particular area, the city of Newport Beach. So as Director Sheldon mentioned, I've been with the water district for 30 years. I was the program manager for the groundwater replenishment system. What the groundwater replenishment system does is it takes wastewater from the Orange County Sanitation District, it runs it through an advanced purification process, and then that water gets treated. So we take the secondary effluent, we turn it into basically distilled water, and then we put it back into the groundwater basin. So it becomes a source of supply for the groundwater basin. So it's very dependable, it's highly reliable, it gives us water supply reliability. If we didn't have that project, the pumping would probably be set at around 50% instead of 77%, which it is currently. The reason that's valuable also is groundwater costs about $464 an acre foot, and acre foot is enough water for two families of four, whereas imported water costs about $1,000 an acre foot. So the more groundwater we can pump, the lower the overall cost of water for our retail water agencies, of course, city of Newport Beach being one. So getting back to the groundwater replenishment system, it does provide enough water on an annual basis for about 850,000 people. We've been operational since January 2008, the first phase of the project, 70 million gallons. We then expanded it and put another 30 million gallons online in May of 2015, and we'll be taking to the board final plans and specs for our final expansion, which will expand the facility from 100 million gallons to 130 million gallons, which is our ultimate capacity, at which point we'll be able to provide enough water for a million people just through that one project. So it was a very large investment. We've, we've invested over $600 million in the project, and the final expansion will cost another $292 million. And this facility is the largest potable reuse project in the world, so it's very significant. And if you haven't been, you're invited to come by. We're only in Fountain Valley, we're 10 minutes away, and we'd love to give you a tour anytime at your, at your convenience. As far as the rainfall this year, we've been, we've been doing very well. In Anaheim at our rain gauge, we have a little over 19 inches of rainfall so far. The average for the year is 13.4 inches. The, the current rain year will end in June, June 30th, so we've still got a few more months to build on that, that 19 inches rainfall. This is very important because a major source of recharge into the groundwater basin is just rainfall that falls in the foothills and naturally percolates into the groundwater basin. We call that incidental recharge. So we'll have a very large number for that. So it's, it's gonna be great. We've done a good job capturing storm water also, which is, I think, our final slide. So you may be aware of a dam called Prado Dam out on the 91 near Corona, if you're driving out towards Palm Springs. It's a federally operated dam. The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers operates a dam. We have a relationship with the Corps, we have an agreement with the Corps, I should say, that allows us to store storm water behind the dam so that at a certain elevation, they'll hold the water and then slowly release it so that it can flow downstream, down the San Ana River into Anaheim, where we can capture it and percolate it into the groundwater basin. So that's a very important program for us. We've worked very hard over the years with the Corps to allow storage at higher and higher elevations so that we can capture more and more storm water. We have what's called a full pool. Right now, there's about 18,000 acre feet behind the dam, which over time will be able to release and put into the groundwater basin as a source of supply. So this year has been very, very good. We're seeing groundwater levels rebound. We should be able to, I don't want to, you know, tip my director off a little too much because we set our pumping and rates in April, but our current basin production percentage of 77%, which is wet as, with as wet as it's been this year, will probably maintain that level. The board has a policy to set it at 75%. We set a little higher last year. We'll probably be able to maintain that because of the wet conditions that we've had this year and the recharge in the basin. And I think that's the end of our presentation, unless you have any questions specific to groundwater.
Any of my colleagues up here? I'm Mr. Avery.
I just think this project's, you know, the whole thing with GWRS is an amazing example of our part of the world. It's really well-run. I mean, there's hundreds of engineers worked on this. The amount of effort on part of the sanitation district, your agency, other agencies, the Army Corps, the whole thing, and that's what it takes to work. It's just absolutely fabulous, and obviously, we all take it for granted, and that's to sort of be expected because we've all got busy lives, but it's something, and it's, there's nothing else, like you said, nothing else is like it. And I have one question. In your view, how much is this for stall desalinization? The GWRS, that's probably a loaded question, but
Well, no, I mean, right now is probably where our board is considering looking at the D cell project in Huntington Beach. I think that we certainly, or it's a board decision, it'll be a policy decision for the board, looking, certainly the D cell would give us additional water supply reliability. The recycled water does that, it's just to what degree do we, do we need from a reliability point of view? And I think that'll probably be the major issue that the board considers, probably next year. Where the project is right now, it has to go before the regional board to renew its permit with the regional board. They'll probably do that towards the end of this year, and then the final permit is with the Coastal Commission, and that will probably take place the first quarter of next year. And then our board would take a, a final vote on entering into a final contract with Poseidon. Right now, we have a term sheet.
Thank you.
I would just add, it is a very reliable source of water, and we are considering it in the process. The cost of it is important as well to analyze, and as Mike mentioned, we'll have a final vote on that coming up.
Ms. Mayor Protem.
I had a question. I know, Mark, you're gonna touch on this, but we're going through our own master plan update on, on our water system, and one of those things that'll come out of that is a discussion about rates that we'll be talking about. And I know one of the things that is gonna be driving our rate discussion is the increase in cost of wholesale water. And I'm curious, when you, how often do you do your own rate studies that will then trickle down into, you know, municipalities who, who charge their residents? And how consistent and reliable will that be for us if we're setting rates, you know, three to five, six years in the future?
We have a five-year rate plan right now that's out. Currently, I think this year, what we'll be presenting to the board, there again, I'm giving Director Sheldon some inside information here, it'll, it'll probably end up being about a 5% increase, and there's reasons for that. We had a subsidy for the groundwater replenishment system through the Metropolitan Water District, what's called an LRP subsidy, and that fell off this year. So those O and M, the, the cost of those O and M that were covered by that subsidy are gonna have to be borne by our retail agencies. So there's ups and downs in the budget. With the final expansion, that will increase our, our rate some, but we're trying to smooth those out over time. There again, anytime we can get that reliable source of water and maintain a higher basin production percentage, that's gonna benefit our retail water agencies. So over time, we will see an increase and then a, then a flattening off, but that's mainly to build these capital projects.
Mind if I ask one more question?
Sure.
Where, oh, Director Sheldon, where you
Yes, I just wanted to add that, you know, as was mentioned earlier, the rain, that affects rates. When it rains, we can pump more. Pump more, you're pumping cheaper water. If we don't have the rain, you have to buy the more expensive water. So it's a very much, sometimes a portion of it is based upon nature, and there are other factors that are out of our control that affect rates, but we, everything we do is about finding more sources of water for the residents of Orange County and Newport Beach.
Thank you. One other question, and you're in a five-year cycle. Where are you in the five-year cycle right now on, on the rates, on the rate that you've, you've created?
We, we just completed that, so we have a five-year forecast, which we are very comfortable, confident in. As I mentioned, we have the final expansion, we just, the board's gonna take an action next month, or we'll be asking for, for an action to advertise the project. So that'll start the ball rolling by the summer. We should have bids in, issuing a contract, probably have a contractor onboard towards the end of this year. Three years later, we'll, we'll have built the project and be online. So we'll be burning through that $292 million that I talked about. Now, not all of that is for the construction, but a large majority of it is, about 200 million. So we'll be spending money over the next few years, and we were very fortunate as we received a loan through the federal government, through EPA, called WIFIa Loan. We were one of 12 projects nationwide that was, was able to secure that loan. We're also piggybacking that on with a state SRF loan, State Revolving Fund loan. These are both low-interest loan programs. With the state, the state loan is probably about 1.8%. The WIFIa loan is a little bit higher than that, but the overall cost of, of funding the project will be significantly lower because of those, those programs, those loan programs.
All right, thank you.
Let me add two more things. Our governor has proposed a water tax, which will affect the water rates for all of the taxpayers, and that's, so that's one thing to take into consideration, as well as what we've seen with water conservation, when less water is used, and that's a great thing, there's a lot of fixed costs like, like this water production we have with the groundwater replenishment. So you have less revenue, and sometimes rates have to, have to go up to pay for those fixed costs. So that's just, you know, the devils in the details and a unforeseen consequence from those policies.
Is the governor's proposal on a tax rate, would it show up directly on someone's bills, or does it get billed to you and then pass through into the agencies?
I would assume it would be passed through, but I don't know if that's been officially come out. Mike, do you know?
I, I think it gets passed through, through the retailer.
On consumption, have those details been communicated?
Those details have not been communicated. I mean, I'm not sure whether you know, Mark.
No, they're, excuse me. Those details are just all preliminary right now, the implementation, the ideas, the concepts are all
And there's competing legislation right now that would negate the need to have a water tax, so there's, there's still a lot of
There's hope. Mr. Duffield.
Thank you, Mayor. When I was first on the council, I, obviously, George taught me a lot about water. I had no idea about water, and I thought George was the only person in the world that knew about water. Thank goodness, you guys also seem to know a lot about water.
And mine.
And so having that said, is October the month that our rain year starts? Does it start October and end in June?
July 1st. Our water year is July 1 through June.
Okay. And then he taught me about this aquifer saltwater intrusion issue. Have we made progress in pushing away the saltwater?
Absolutely. Part of the groundwater replenishment system, the reason we built it was to be able to pump more into our existing seawater barrier and in fact expand that barrier. So we've expanded the barrier, we're pumping more water into the barrier, and that's, we are seeing the water being pushed back even more.
That's great. I know that, that was a big, gonna be quite a problem with, the more drought we had, the more opportunity for contamination. So good, 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 good. Thank you.
I want to thank you, too. I've been out to your facility and had the tour through the replenishment operation. Quick question on your, I'll just ask a question. Do we recover 100% of our wastewater?
By the time we do our final expansion, the answer to that question will be yes.
That's fantastic. That's amazing.
100% of the reclaimable water.
Right. And is there any community, state, city, state that does this? It's unbelievable. It's just that the, in the forward-thinking, the vision that created this system under your program management was astounding.
And it was, I mean, I just would point out also, it was a partnership between the Orange County Sanitation District and the Orange County Water District.
Who would ever think the two could come together? And different products.
Exactly. So we, we like to talk about that all the time because it still is a very important component in what both agencies do.
Well, congratulations on that. And then one other macro question, what's, I don't know if you can answer this in a simple response, the issue with Colorado River. I understand that there's still some further adjudications on allocation and that will be threatening to Southern Californians?
Potentially. I mean, what people don't realize is there's actually about a 20-year drought on the Colorado River, and water levels are, are reaching a point to where there could be a trigger of allocating the, that river water. And there's a certain series of steps as to who gets taken the, the water away first. Arizona's actually the first one, California's, we have senior rights. So it's a very complicated issue, but I think we do need to be cognizant of the fact that there are severe, severe challenges on the Colorado. We're still, we're still getting our allocation, but if, if the drought continues, we could be in jeopardy of losing part of that.
Very, very, very fine. Well, thank you, gentlemen. Yes, Steve, go ahead.
Mayor, thank you. If I could just say one thing, I have opposed the water tax that we discussed earlier. Our district has passed a resolution opposing it as well, and we've communicated that to our legislators in Sacramento.
Very good. You're very quick, good. Staff, do we have any other comments or questions?
Yes, yes. So we have a few. Thank you, Mike and Steve. I really appreciate the presentation, and again, highly recommend taking the tour or any members of the public that would like to take the to take the tour. It is just absolutely fascinating to see that in operation and action.
Does everybody drink the water right there?
Absolutely.
Yes.
I think I did.
Yep. All right, very good. So just kind of a recap and closure, and I want to talk about, a little bit about our system and, and context, and then also I want to talk about our Jamboree situation last week. So, a, as the Water District mentioned, you know, with the rain and the current situation is good. It, it, we have a good, good situation right now with our current water supply. There are challenges on the Colorado River, which make up a portion of our water supply. As you mentioned, you know, costs continue to increase to pump and, and produce groundwater. And we have a strong, you know, CIP program, about $5 million annually to replace our infrastructure. And the key thing that utilities also focuses on is, is programmed and scheduled and proactive maintenance. You know, it's fixing these things before they break as much as possible can be done. And that's a key management strategy within a department. And even within those come non-master plan needs, whether it's a, a water quality improvement or a regulatory agency makes a change that we need to implement and be a part of. And then customer service is a key focus for the city on the whole, because that takes up many departments in being very responsive to our customers, so. And in the future, you know, continued investment in maintenance and capital improvements, I'm going to talk about that in just a second. And then, as we talked about two meetings ago, the advanced meter infrastructure and then water conservation will continue to be an important part of operating a water system. Just to give you an example, last week, you know, we pulled a couple of our, two of our key pumps, we rehabbed, put one back in, pulled another one out of operation. And this is a combination of city staff and contractor resources, and this is all proactive preventative maintenance. Water needs are, are low right now. Now's the time to fix your pumps and your pipes and things like that as much as possible in preparation for the summer. So coming up, we have two key things that we're going to be talking to you about, and one is the Water Master Plan, which is handled by Public Works, and that's going to be published here real soon in terms of a draft. And that previous master plan was 10 years ago, 2008, 2009. And it is recommending some additional capital replacements. And at the next city council meeting, we're going to be presenting to you the request to hire a consultant to study the rates and, and conduct our financial plan, so we can update that and look at where we sit financially in the water system. Because the previous one was done in 2009. And it's going to be a key strategy. It all looks pretty, pretty reasonable preliminarily, and that's what we're going to be asking you to, to take a look at, at the next council meeting. So two weeks ago, I mentioned, as we were sitting here at the council meeting, two weeks ago, we had an, an emergency water line break on Jamboree Road just south of Coast Highway. And it was, it was a mess. It was, it was, it was a challenging one. You can see on the picture on the right, to, to shut down and isolate the water line break, we had to go in the middle of the highway there, and it was very challenging to get to, to even shut down that water valve there in the intersection. We were able to get it shut down, and through redundancy in the system, no one was without water. But there was a lot of mess to clean up, and of course, fixing what was going on. The first thing when you have a main break is you can't just start digging anywhere anyhow, because there's other utilities that are running through there. And so there's a lot of caution and, and precision. The picture on the right is that same night as we were meeting here, and you can see them coming across the gas line there, that's to the left, on the right picture, on the very left-hand side. So they worked as hard as they could, but as, as the hole became deeper and more caving in, we shut down operations and regrouped and closed the road and regrouped for the next day. And so the next day, working with contractor resources, in-house resources, we were able to isolate and find the actual break, and you can see it there in the picture too. It's a 1957 pipe, but the connection that was made to that pipe to serve promontory point in the early 70s, and that's where the point of failure was. You can see it on the left-hand screen, you can see where, where the weld broke off and ruptured. So we thought we had a great plan, got everything charged, midnight, Wednesday night, turned on the water, and there was another leak. As, as what happens sometimes with these water main breaks. So we spent the next few days digging and, and getting prepared to, to replace the pipe. We came across, this pipe was in a steel casing as well as it came across Coast Highway. It was very challenging with the shoring, and we worked pretty much every night for the next few nights there till 1:00 a.m., getting as much productivity as we could to replace the, the pipe there.
Excuse me, can I just interrupt? Because I, I did a personal site visit, so I could comment on. Go back to that previous slide if you would. This is why when you read about underground activity, and those, you know this better than I, but I'll just tell you how much I learned when, from your folks that were there, that these lines that are going across, cutting across horizontally, those are other cable, telecommunications, electricity, whatever that is going there. So it's just very difficult to work around those existing infrastructure additions that exist in that space, and that's why oftentimes there are multiple problems related to other infrastructure issues.
Definitely. And the depth is also part of the challenge. Picture on the left here, you can see the other set of, the break in the pipe that we found, which we, we end up replacing about 30 feet of pipe in that area. And as they were installing too, it's threading the needle through all those utilities that you mentioned, Mayor, and, and trying to get those things in was challenging. And fortunately, last Tuesday, they finished everything. We turned on the system, everything's working great, but then it takes a few days to restore and pave and backfill. And, and we were able to open the road last week, and, and we really appreciate the patience of Balboa Island. And as we worked through this, especially because they were impacted, but we have the situation resolved there too. This is not something that we prefer, but these, these water line breaks do happen, and getting to them right away is important.
Mr. Duffield, do you have a question?
Thank you, Mayor. So, Mark, do we have better materials now than we did before? That looked like it was corrosion that contributed to that. Are there plastics now that could, when you do your projections for replacement, are they many years out because of the new modern technology, or, or is it just the same old pipe?
Good question. So for this type of pipe, this was a transmission main pipe, we're actually using very similar pipe to what was installed back in the day. It's steel pipe, it's mortar lined inside and outside. Unfortunately, as all things, it's, a lot of these things happen to, they find the weakest point, right? Somewhere along the line, is there another point that's weak? And that's where you tend to have your breaks. For smaller pipelines, we use, you know, PVC pipe, and it's state-of-the-art, it's the best thing that's out there, it's very resistant to corrosion and things like that too. So we have a formula that we've used, other agencies are using too, and they seem to have the longevity.
But PVC isn't in that, in the bigger mainline pipe size, transmission pipe?
They offer it, but our preference, and from what we've heard and, and our experience is, you know, anything that's 12, anything greater than 12 inches, we want to use a steel pipe.
Can I keep going?
And that's it. That concludes my presentation.
All right. Any questions up here? Mayor Potem?
Yeah, thank you. So you, you mentioned earlier, I just want to make sure we highlight for, for members of the public, the Water Master Plan. So could you explain just briefly what our previous Water Master Plan, generally speaking, what goes into a Water Master Plan? How detailed is it? How big is it? What's the, what's the anticipated time for review at council for adoption?
Sure. So, so this will be presented by the Public Works Department too. It's something I worked on as, as a city engineer. And what it does is it takes a 30-year outlook in the future of what are the system needs in the future of all the pipes, the pumps, the reservoirs, the facilities? It takes in data from analytics of actually system information. In other words, we do fire flow testing, right? We'll test fire hydrants. We'll look at age of pipe. We'll look at input from operators, right? What's been our experience in a certain neighborhood? All those factors go in to delivering basically a program that says you should replace, you know, pipes at this frequency, at this amount, and that'll be a formula and a key part of our update on the water rate study.
How so? How so? Yeah, walk, walk us through just a little bit more, when we were talking about the, how does the Water Master Plan play into or affect the discussions that we'll have up here on the rate study?
Sure. So, so your rates are basically made up of, of three components. One is, is capital. And that where, that's where the Water Master Plan is going to come in. That's about a third of a cost, just in, just in rough numbers. The other third is the cost of buying water and producing water. So we have to buy water from, from, from the Metropolitan Water District. We also have to buy water from Orange County Water District, right, to pump it. So that's another third of the pie. And then the other third is the operations, the customer service, and, and those fixed costs, just to, to make sure that we can answer the phone and respond to water meters and measuring and billing and repairing and things like that. So that's, you can see how important the, the Water Master Plan is, is a huge chunk of that.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. It's, it's an interesting issue. Obviously, this council's gone through it on the sewer side of things, and now we'll be going through it on the water side of things. And I appreciate the, appreciate the effort.
So when will we be talking about this again?
So at the next city council meeting, we'll bring forward a, a contract for a water rate study consultant. And then also, we'll be posting the water, the draft Water Master Plan here shortly as well. And then Public Works will come in the coming weeks and months to actually present formal adoption of the Water Master Plan.
Very good. Ms. Brenner?
I just, oops, I'd just like to say thank you to Mark and his people, because you are so responsive, and we are amazingly fortunate in our city to have people of your caliber and the caliber of the people that work for you. So thank you so much.
And as I said, when I was out there on a Sunday, that most of those people that were working were our employees, and of course, a few contractors, and they were a great bunch. They were a highly skilled, enthusiastic bunch. They wanted to fix this problem, and that's their badge of honor, and, and they did it. So please extend to your team our thanks and appreciation for continuing to service. And this was just the week following, I guess it was a wastewater line in Finley and, and on the peninsula, maintenance check, and, and you find a clogged pipe. So this is part of your day's work.
Thank you.
Particularly these old, older pipes that, 1950s doesn't seem that old, but I guess it is, it's over 60 years old. Were there any other comments up here? Any comments from the public?
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. As you all know, our city has a Water Quality Coastal Tidelands Committee, and I will probably just be revealing the very slowness of my comprehension of things, but it, it took me about eight years of attending the meetings of the Water Quality Coastal Tidelands Meetings to finally just come to the realization last year that that committee, its concern is confined solely to the quality of the water that is in the bay, and to a limited extent in the ocean. And it has nothing to do with the quality of the water that we drink, or where that water comes from, which I think means that the responsibility for making sure that our Water Master Plan is adequate for our future water supplies, and reliability of that supply lies with you and not with that mysterious committee. Thank you.
That's a good observation. Thank you, Jim. Any other public comments? Seeing none? Any comments up here? No? All right. Well, thank you, staff. This was just for information, so we receive it enthusiastically, so thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Public comments on agenda and non-agenda items, please come forward.
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. And first, I wanted to say that at this point in the program at your last meeting, I made a misstatement about the accuracy of what the staff had presented to you at the meeting before that. I regret making that mistake. I apologize for that mistake. And I did that in writing so that I could have time to address you on closed session item C, which I think has to it a very simple and important moral. In 2011, the city decided that it wanted to outsource parking meter collection. And item C has to do with a several hundred thousand dollar claim that the city is now facing from the company that we contracted with. We chose Central Parking System in part based on their sales pitch, that with their new, more modern and efficient collection system, the credit card pay stations, that the city would have a increase in revenues. As best I can determine, the revenues didn't go up as much as Central Parking claimed that they were going to go up. And so in 2015, the former city council decided to increase the parking meter rates. And whether you're aware of that or not, we're continuing to increase them 10% every year. The increase in meter rates caused the revenue to go up, and as part of that original contract, we had incentivized Central Parking, telling them if they were able to do this, to increase the revenue, that we would give them a cut of the amount above what the city had previously been able to collect. So naturally, when the city council increased the rates, the revenue went up, but had nothing to do with the hard work of Central Parking. On the other hand, Central Parking is reading the contract that the city signed back in 2011 and revised in 2012, and it says they get a percent of the increase, no matter where it came from. So I think the simple moral of that, which applies not to this, but to everything you do, you need to read very carefully what you sign or enact, because it means what it says, not what you wish that it had said. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none? All right. Mr. Harp?
The city council adjourned to closed session to discuss items 4A through C, including meeting with Mayor Dixon and Mayor Potem O'Neill to discuss labor negotiations with unrepresented employees in the key and management group, as well as meeting with legal counsel to discuss whether to initiate litigation in regards to one matter, and to discuss the correspondence from Central Parking Systems, Inc. for additional compensation as set forth in the letters dated June 29th and October 19th, 2018, both of which are on file with the city attorney's office here at City Hall, located at 100 Pacific Center Drive. Thank you.
We are in recess until 7:00 p.m. I'm ready. Okay. Good evening. I'll call the meeting to order. What day is it? February 26th, regular session, Newport Beach City Council. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect, all councils, all members, council members are present.
All right. Mr. Harp, is there a closed session report, please?
Thank you, Mayor Dixon. There is no closed session report this evening.
Tonight, thank you. Tonight, we'll have the invocation by Reverend Dr. George Okuzi, St. John the Divine Episcopal Church in Costa Mesa, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Council, led by Council Member Duffy. Duffield.
Almighty God, we come to you this evening asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. We mean to serve our community, to use our resources wisely and well, and to represent all members of our community fairly, to make decisions that promote the common good. Almighty God, we pray for those who are in the offices that govern this city of Newport Beach, that they make wise and godly decisions, walk and guide them as they accomplish all the ongoing projects and even the ones yet to be initiated. Blessed be thy name. Bless these men and women in our city government, the mayor's office, the commission, and all elected officials, and certainly those who put themselves in harm's way, like the law enforcement, the firefighters, and the emergency responders. Fill us with your grace as we look at the need of our people, Lord, and help us to take care of everyone, young and old, rich and poor, and everybody in this community. Open our ears so that we may hear your voice, open our minds so that we may receive your eternal wisdom, open our spirits so that we may know your leading and guidance, and open our hearts so that we may receive your wonderful love. May our personal faith give us strength to act honestly and wisely and well in all matters pertaining to all that brings us together. We ask all these in your precious holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Please stay standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Place your hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk.
The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The city council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited, three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode.
All right. Now is the time for city council announcements and new items council members would like to be introduced for future agendas and oral reports from the city council on committee activities, starting with Mr. Avery.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to announce that for all those in District 2, but also anywhere else in the city, you're welcome to attend the Newport Heights and Cliff Haven Neighborhood Meeting Wednesday, March 6th at 6:00 PM at the Newport Theater Arts Center, which is located right next to John Wayne Park, formerly known as Enson Park. And we're going to be discussing primarily the implementation of the traffic study, things that we've achieved, and some things that are left to take another look at. And we'll also have the representatives from the police department to work with residents and some of their concerns on crime. And then, we'll have a little open discussion about people's particular concerns for the neighborhoods. So, it's more of a listening session for me and for staff. I believe our city manager will be there and some other key staff members. So, it's an opportunity for the neighbors to come together and learn some things and also let us know their concerns and try, as we try to work together, to make the neighborhood safer and better for everyone. And finally, the only other thing I had was, I had a couple more meetings at the Orange County Sanitation District, where I'm representing the city, along with about 20 other council members from the various cities in Orange County. And the learning curve is still pretty steep. It's a large, complex, and very amazing agency. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Duffield.
Thank you, Mayor. Coming up on next Monday, we will be traveling to Washington, DC. This will be our third trip, my third trip. The purpose is to, well, beg is a bad word, but ask for money of 25 million to finish the lower dredging project that we have. We look forward to removing about a million cubic yards. And this is a slow, arduous process, but after, this will be the third year, we've got a good handle on it, and I'm looking forward to making real progress on this and thanks to staff and all their hard work. So, we look forward to getting back there and getting the job done this time. And that's it. Thank you.
We wish you luck. Yeah, good job. Mr. Muldoon.
Ms. Brenner. Yes, I attended the first GPU meeting after our meeting last, our last council meeting down at Marina Park, and all the steering committee members were there that have been selected, and many of the members that are hoping to be selected, and our next two, were there as well, and it was an interesting meeting. And then, that same evening, there was a meeting at Grand Hound Park. I believe we have a couple of slides on that. We are looking at doing a redesign for that project. It looks to be a really exciting new project, and that was the same night as the other meeting. And so, they had quite a few people there, but it's something that we are hoping to get more public input on. We discussed it at the Corona del Mar Residents Association, and I believe that if we're able to get back out into the community, that we can get some more buy-in and some more good ideas from our community members. So, we're going to be doing that. And then, there is a meeting at the next PBNR Commission meeting. They will also be discussing this project. I spoke on February 14th at the Corona del Mar Good Morning CDM Meeting. These are held on the second Thursday of each month at 7:30 AM at Bahia Corinthian. Staff members from all our elected representatives go to these meetings, and it's a great opportunity to find out what's happening at all levels of government. These meetings are open to the public, and they're really interesting. On Friday, I attended my first of five Fridays at UCI on public policymaking. This is put on by the Association of California Cities. The focus was on understanding all the various agencies and organizations at work to make a difference in government, and it's more than just elected officials. So, it's really a fascinating, a fascinating group. And today, we attended the FIN. I'll let Diane talk more about, we went to the dunes, and Jeff and I went to the dunes and saw the beginning of that program. And today, I also attended the Costa Mesa Chambers Meeting on homelessness. Costa Mesa is being really proactive in this. They're opening their temporary shelter on April 1st, and this will allow them to start enforcing their anti-camping ordinances. They're also negotiating to buy a building, which they will turn into a permanent facility. This meeting was attended by elected officials from all over the county. So, Tustin, Fullerton, Huntington Beach had elected officials there, and everyone was talking about collaboration and how this is something that we really do have to approach together. So, it was a really interesting meeting. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Herdman.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I have several things to announce. This first announcement, I forgot to announce at our last council meeting. The Big Canyon Creek Water Quality Improvement and Restoration Project Phase 1 is a recent winner of an honor award in the wash water and storm water category from the California Chapter of the American Council of Engineering Companies. It is among one of the state's finest engineering products and was awarded because of that. So, that's my first announcement. I'm the, one of my new assignments is to vector control. I'm a trustee on the vector control board, and I have a responsibility to report back to you on a once-a-month basis regarding the activities of this committee. And I've been asked to tell you to start checking for standing water around your house. The West Nile virus is still very active in this county. Check your standing water for mosquitoes. I get a report each month for vector control activities that took place in our city. We had four service requests, one for mosquitoes, one for rats, one for red-imported fire ants, three, excuse me, for that. Fifty-eight adult mosquitoes were collected and analyzed in our city. So, tomorrow morning, if you've got time, go out and check for standing water. All right? I attended, as I always do, a police swearing-in ceremony yesterday morning. Several of us were there. It's always an honor to be at these activities, and it's great to have our Civil Service Board members there also. We had a meeting following up, continuing to follow up and work on airport issues. The mayor, myself, Councilman Muldoon, our city manager, met with Supervisor Lisa Bartlett on Monday of this week, and we discussed airport issues with her, both general and commercial aviation issues. And then, Mayor, you're going to talk about the FIN program that we visited this morning. All right. We have an aviation committee meeting coming up this coming Monday, the 4th, March 4th. It'll be held right across here in the community room at 4:00 PM. One of the topics on the agenda will be the county's proposed general aviation improvement program for John Wayne Airport. This is an important project for Newport Beach to track, as it could potentially decrease the amount of smaller general aviation planes at JWA and open the door to adding more general aviation jet traffic. If you'd like to learn more, we have a webpage with information at our website. Is it up on the screen?
Yeah.
Yeah. You're also encouraged to attend Monday's Aviation Committee Meeting, where there will be a presentation about the alternatives contained in the environmental impact report. I believe there's three. The city manager intends to bring this item to us, the city council, in March with a recommendation as to what alternative Newport Beach should support. And then, the only other thing I have to announce, Mark, if you're interested in these aviation issues, Supervisor Michelle Steele will be holding a town hall meeting here in Newport Beach, and it'll be, it'll have to do with aviation issues. It is also going to be held in the community room right across the way there. It'll be at 10:00 AM in the morning on April 6th. That's a Saturday. Thank you.
Mayor Potem.
Thank you. I've now been sworn in to the Transportation Corridor Agency, San Joaquin Hills Board of Directors, that, for our purposes, is essentially the 73. Councilmember Brenner is the alternate on that, and I appreciate her filling in when I'm not able to make it. The police swearing-in that Councilmember Herdman referenced was great. It was a swearing-in and promotional ceremony. Congratulations to the four folks who've, who went through yesterday. And it's always a great showing of support to see all the other departments who show up for these. So, thank you very much for being there. And then, I'd like to bring back for future consideration the creation of a subcommittee that would survey and bring back for recommendation for adoption, a lobbying, a specific lobbyist registration ordinance. Thank you.
All right. I have a series of announcements here, as we've all, my colleagues have been talking about that. Last week, the Recreation and Senior Services Department kicked off the inaugural, first ever year of the FIN program, as we, the acronym is Fostering Interest in Nature, and hosted a class of 33 5th grade students from Fremont Elementary. And here's this picture of this this morning, council members Brenner and Herdman and myself and city staff. This is really, it's a groundbreaking program, if you will, precedent-setting program. It's the start of a nine-week session of hosting students from Orange County Title I schools, those are schools in lower socioeconomic needs, for a four-day, three-night, there, you see the tents there. They actually are sleeping in the tents. Environmental science camp at no cost to the participants. Students get to experience camping in tents, exploring tide pools at the Back Bay Science Center, hiking the educational trails in Big Canyon, and learning about water safety from our lifeguards, and so much more. The FIN program resulted from the Lido House Hotel Development Agreement many years ago, which provided for an educational, low-cost overnight stay program funded by the city and the hotel. FIN is proving to be an outdoor experience these students will never forget, and at the same time, it develops future stewards of our precious resources. And it really is a fantastic program that actually Dave Kiff, our former city manager, came up with the idea as part of our presentation, the city and Lido House Hotels' presentation before the California Coastal Commission, for, to provide some low-cost opportunities for visitors to Newport Beach. And this really is a great program that's just beginning and should go for 10 years because we've committed to that for 10 years. And so, today, members of the city council and Parks, Beaches, and Recreation Commissioners and city staff welcome students from Henninger Elementary School on their first day of camp. So, it was really, really great. We heard in the study session a report from our utilities department with Mark talking about the jamboree water line break. So, I just wanted to show that I was there onsite giving good direction to our highly skilled utility employees, working on a Sunday, all through the weekend for several days. So, I'm sure they benefited from my questions. Mr. Herdman mentioned the John Wayne Town Hall, but just here's a flyer, just so everybody's aware of it, that Michelle Steele and I, as mayor, will be co-hosting this, and we should probably get the chair of the Aviation Committee involved in that as well.
I'll be there.
Yeah, I'm sure you will be. Saturday, April 6th, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM in the community room. And representatives of John Wayne Airport also will be there to provide updates on flight pass, flight pass, airport noise, and the general aviation improvement project. We have a lot of important issues on our plate that the Aviation Committee, under Mr. Herdman's leadership, and then, there's a working group of Mr. Herdman, myself, and Mr. Muldoon are working on weekly, if not more often, on working with our, in our community groups, very active community groups. So, this is really all important, and it's something that we all can agree, because we want to preserve and protect the quality of life as we know it here in Newport Beach. I think that is it for me. So, okay. Public comments. Now, we go to public comments on items to council announcements or oral reports. Any public comments? Seeing none? Madam Clerk.
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items 1 through 11. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each of the items for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the forum listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommended in action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action. I also need to announce, if item 3 is pulled, I will need to recuse myself due to real property interest.
Okay. Counsel, any items to pull from the consent items number 1 through 11? Mr. Avery.
I have none, but I will also have to recuse myself from item 3 if it's pulled.
Mr. Duffield.
Yes, I also have to recuse myself on item 3, as I have property in the flood zone.
Mr. Muldoon.
Just to say for the record, that on item number 3, I was re-qualified with luck of draw on an issue that I normally have a conflict on.
Okay. Ms. Brenner. Mr. Herdman.
Yes, I have to recuse myself from number 3 because of real, real property interest.
And Mayor Potem.
I have none.
And I have none.
Okay. I, I'm sorry.
Mayor, I, property interest, my reason for.
Okay. All right. And do you have?
I have a motion. So, I move approval of the consent calendar with item 3 showing recusals from council members Avery, Duffield, and Herdman.
I'll second the motion.
All right. Do we have public comments on the consent calendar, please?
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher, and I would like to speak to item number 5. The process of creating and amending coastal plans is a very complex one, because it requires an agreement between you, the city council, and a state agency, the Coastal Commission. Item 5 is, you know, is your final decision to adopt or not adopt changes that you requested the Coastal Commission consider back in 2017, and which they agreed to let you adopt if you wished to when they met here just a couple of months ago, back in December. Among the changes, there was a cleanup to the provisions in our implementation plan about height limits, in particular, how they applied to planned communities. Back in 2017, when you were considering what to ask for in this cleanup, it was pointed out to you that that provision about the height limits for planned communities included a confusing sentence. a confusing sentence that had got inadvertently, I believe, inserted into our 2010 zoning code and then got copied in the implementation plan. I commend you for reacting to those comments by asking our staff to ask the coastal commission to take that confusing sentence out of our implementation plan. It's a good thing. I applaud you for doing that. However, there was even then some confusion. This is a very messy process and the sentence was removed only as it applied to what's called the shoreline height limitation area, which is an area immediately around the bay. It turns out that most of the planned communities in the coastal zone are actually outside that area and this cleanup doesn't address that problem. So, what I'm trying to tell you is we still have a problem in the implementation plan. We have a problem in the zoning code that it's not telling us how height limits should be applied to planned communities dating back to 1972 is where the height limits came from and the council has committed to honoring and respecting those height limits as far as I know. So, what I want to ask you to do is to approve this part. It's a partial correction to that, but I hope you will commit to pursuing this until both the zoning code and the coastal plan have restored that, eliminated that confusion and restored the height limit code as it applies to planned communities as it was and has been and should have been for the last 46 or 47 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Campbell, do you want to comment on that?
I'm available for any questions, but I realize the process is a little bit confusing and at times these amendments are complicated. We feel we've got the council's direction accurately reflected in the ordinance this evening and it's consistent with the coastal commission's adoption as well, so we agree that we should move forward tonight.
Okay.
I'm here for any questions if you have.
Okay, thank you very much. Any, that's okay. Any other public comments, please come forward on the consent calendar items? No? Seeing none, do we have, can we vote? Do we have a second? We have motion in a second. Let's vote.
Prior to reading the votes, I'll read the ordinance titles for items 3, 4 and 5. Ordinance number 2019-2, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Newport Beach amending section 15.5.090 of chapter 15.05, adding a section of chapter 15.50 and amending certain sections of chapter 15.50 of title 15 of the Newport Beach Municipal Code related to flood plain management. Ordinance number 2019-3, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Newport Beach adopting Plan Community Development Plan Amendment Number PD 2015-5, amending Area 5 of the Bayview Plan Community for the Harbor Point Senior Living Project, a senior convalescent and congregate care facility located at 101 Bayview Place. Ordinance number 2019-4, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Newport Beach approving development agreement number DA 2018-006 for the Harbor Point Senior Living Project, a senior convalescent and congregate care facility located at 101 Bayview Place. And ordinance number 2019-5, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Newport Beach amending title 21 of Newport Beach Municipal Code to approve local coastal program amendment number LC 2017-002 as modified by the California Coastal Commission. The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Very good. Okay. Madam Clerk, still your floor.
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Are there any public comments on non-agenda items? Please come forward.
Hello, my name is Dylan White and I am a senior at Newport Harbor High School. I decided to come speak here tonight to let you know what's happening at the Newport Aquatic Center. I've been a rower at the NAC for the last four years. I have competed in two national championships and this past summer I represented the United States at the World Rowing Championships in the Czech Republic. The NAC, its supporters and its coaches have provided me the opportunity to exceed my goals. It's because of rowing at the NAC that I am proud to say I will be attending and rowing at the University of Pennsylvania this fall. I spend a considerable amount of time at the NAC. During the past four years, I have witnessed the executive director continuously harass, verbally abuse, condescend and roadblock the junior rowing coaches and former junior rowing director Pat Rolfis. It has become blatantly obvious that the executive director has different rules for different people and programs at the NAC. He treats the coaches and the kids in the junior rowing program terribly. I have seen a bunch of nasty confrontations, including two major ones in 2017 when some of my teammates and I witnessed the executive director cussing at and physically poking some of my coaches. So many people were upset about this and the complaints finally got to a point where the board had to deal with it. I attend the board meetings when they discussed hiring lawyers to determine if there were labor issues that needed to be addressed. I believe the result of that investigation found that the executive director did not act appropriately and was told not to interact with the junior rowing coaches at all. The board instructed that the management of the coaches and program was to be handled by junior rowing director Pat Rolfis. The executive director did not follow these instructions and was even more upset by this order and wanted to make sure that the coaches and Mr. Rolfis knew that he was still in power and threatened them that he could fire them at any time. Everyone was much happier when Mr. Rolfis was running the program, but unfortunately, the executive director fired Mr. Rolfis. In the next board meeting, the board all admitted that they had no idea that he was going to fire Mr. Rolfis. Soon after this, the only good board members left were kicked off of the board. Without them and Mr. Rolfis there to protect the coaches and the kids, the executive director is now back to his old ways of bullying and because of this, the NAC is a very hostile environment for the kids and some of the coaches that go there every day. The board of the NAC is not protecting its members by allowing their executive director to continue to abuse his power. The rest of the rowers and I can hear him yelling at the coaches and we are concerned that they will either quit or be fired any day now. Please help the kids in Newport by replacing the board and the executive director. The NAC belongs to all of us, but they run it like it belongs to only them.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments, please come forward.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your time. I'm here to inform you.
Could you please identify your name?
Yeah. Budins Edward Weiser. I'm here to inform you of a national epidemic that grows worse and worse every day. Your politicians keep ignoring it while Americans keep suffering because of it. How have we lost sight of our American values? How have we gone astray from the path of greatness and vitality? What seeks to undo everything we've worked so hard to build as a nation? What's the cause of our undoing? It's warm beer. Until today, because today is the day that we restore faith in America. My name is Budins E. Edward Weiser and I'm running for president. And when I'm elected in 2020, you can rest assure that no warm beer will ever be served to an American's lips again. Sure. You might want a candidate who went to Harvard or some fancy school, or any school for that matter. You might ask yourself, do I have what it takes to be your commander in chief? If you like cold beer, I'm your man. My education, I skipped the BS. I got a master's in cold and a PhD in beer. My opponents, they might also be for cold beer, but they haven't said a thing. They just keep talking about global warming and the economy. None of that matters if we don't have cold beer. The more we remain silent, the more we keep ignoring this, the more warm beer gets poured across our fair land. It's time to finally end this epidemic. From California to Texas, New Jersey to Maine, North Carolina down to Florida, South Dakota all the way back to Oregon, let's end the warm beer epidemic on November 7th. Let's bring cold to the voting booth and remember, vote wiser. And we can celebrate a win for America with a nice cold beer. My name is Budins Edward Weiser. I stand for America and I stand for cold beer. Thank you for your votes.
Well, you're welcome and we're happy that you could exercise your First Amendment rights to speak in public. Thank you. Next, our next public, public comment, come forward, please.
That's hard to follow up. My name is Alexandra Carubis. I'm a student at University of California Irvine School of Law and I'm currently a resident of Newport Beach. Thank you so, so much for giving me a chance to speak to you today. Myself and some of my peers from UCI Law are part of a project looking to advocate for homeless and low-income individuals and their pets. When local cities like Newport Beach criminalize the homeless, they often lose their pet companions. These men and women often face difficulties in reclaiming their pets due to high shelter fees and other shelter redemption policies. At OC Animal Care, homeless pet owners have to face impound fees of $120 or more in addition to any veterinary services provided. The shelter also requires that those redeeming their pets provide vaccination history or a photograph of their pet, verify the city and major cross streets where the pet was lost and verify the date that the pet was last seen. Individuals also need to present a valid driver's license or a California ID card. Many of these requirements raise barriers for homeless individuals looking to reclaim their animals. Homeless individuals with pets are also challenged with a housing barrier as they search for affordable housing options in the long term. Confronted with the choice of being forced from their companion or finding adequate housing, many homeless pet owners are faced with a heartbreaking decision. Cities like Los Angeles have shown that they're committed to humanely dealing with the issue by adopting legislation that requires that all housing financed by the city's Housing and Community Investment Department be pet-friendly. There is much more that we can do in Orange County and here in Newport Beach to remove both short-term barriers that prevent the homeless from being reunited with their pets and long-term barriers that prevent them from finding affordable housing that is friendly toward pet owners. The latest point in time report for Orange County suggested that on a single night in January, approximately 4,792 individuals in the county were experiencing homelessness. Out of this population, 960 individuals were in transitional housing, 1,248 were in emergency shelters and 2,584 were completely unsheltered. It's hard for many Orange County residents like myself to imagine spending even one night unsheltered in the cold in the middle of January. It's hard for many of us to even imagine these kind of issues. For many of these individuals, they look to their pets as essential companions that provide affection, stability and even protection. The essential companionship that pets provide for homeless individuals can often be equally as important as other essentials like food and shelter. I look forward to continuing to speak to you at these meetings about furthering Newport Beach's protection and assistance of homeless and low-income individuals and their pets. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name's Emily Genslinger. I'm also from UCI Law. As Alex touched on, there's a couple of us here who are advocating on behalf of homeless and low-income individuals and their pets. As Alex mentioned, we have both short and long-term goals in our advocacy plan and I'm going to elaborate a little bit more on our short-term goals, which primarily focus on animals that have been lost or seized and are now in shelters. Part of why we're here in Newport Beach is that Newport Beach actually has its own shelter. Many animals that are seized throughout Orange County go to the Orange County Animal Care Shelter, but Newport Beach has its own shelter that takes animals lost and seized from both Newport Beach and Costa Mesa. As Alex mentioned, there are a number of requirements that have to be met when an animal is lost or seized for an individual to then get that animal back. In Newport Beach, the fee system is so complicated that I actually couldn't get anyone to even tell me what the fee was if an animal was lost or seized. That's because there are multiple different factors that go into it. Depends on whether the animal was spayed or neutered, the vaccinations, the amount of time, all sorts of factors. In other places in the county, the fees like Alex mentioned are well over $100 and can sometimes be over $200. In addition, you have to show proof of ownership of the animal, which can be very difficult for individuals who don't have identification. The other thing that creates a huge barrier is that the animals are typically only kept for five to seven days. After that, they either go up for adoption or in some cases may be euthanized, depending on the animal. For individuals whose pets are seized, this frequently happens because they are arrested and if they're arrested or incarcerated, they can't get their animal within five to seven days. Additionally, they might have mental health issues, other health concerns, or they might just have access to transportation issues that prevent them from getting to the shelter in a timely fashion. In contrast to Orange County, however, Los Angeles County only has a fee of $20 for the first impound and then the max fee of $60. San Diego similarly has a much lower fee of $40 and San Diego's euthanasia rate is close to 0% versus Orange County's euthanasia rate, which is almost 25%. So, we do feel that there is possibly a correlation there between the excessively high fees and the euthanasia rates. So, we think that addressing the fee issue and making it easier for homeless and low-income individuals to get access to their pets who have been seized or lost will also in turn help with the youth, that high euthanasia rate here in Orange County. As Alex pointed out, this may seem like a small thing, but for individuals who are low-income or homeless, their pets could be everything to them. So, we ask that you take a look at this fee structure system and see if there's anything that could be implemented to help assist that and alleviate this barrier for homeless and low-income individuals.
Well, thank you. Is there another speaker on the same topic? Okay, all right.
Hello, my name is Kelsey Goldman and I am also a student at UCI Law. Here is part of a project addressing the issues that homeless and low-income families are facing who have pets. Specifically, I'm going to talk about our long-term goals in terms of housing. In Newport Beach specifically, nearly a third of households are low-income and there are over 100 documented residents who experience homelessness. In 2017, over 1,000 pets were relinquished by their families to Orange County shelters. Surrendering a beloved pet is a traumatic experience that hurts families and should be avoided at all costs. The increasing amount of relinquished animals in the system also means higher rates of unnecessary euthanasia and increased costs to taxpayers. Allowing homeless and low-income families to keep their pets means better outcomes for the animals and for the people. Pets have been shown to improve mental and physical health, which can mean better outcomes, especially in regards to employment for their families, and it also means happier outcomes for their pets. One of the most common reasons for surrendering a pet is financial and housing issues. There is a lack of pet-friendly housing in Orange County, especially for low-income families. There are no shelters in Newport Beach for the homeless and their pets. To address this problem, I ask that you consider ordinances or legislation that mandate all new publicly funded affordable housing projects are built to be pet-friendly. Additionally, there should be requirements that prevent extra pet rent in this housing, which would price low-income families out of keeping their beloved pets. Furthermore, legislation should be put, or ordinances or legislation should be considered to be put forward to open a pet-friendly homeless shelter in Newport Beach to keep people and their pets safe from the increasingly extreme weather that we're facing. I hope that you will consider these suggestions for addressing this pressing problem before more pets lose their families and more families lose their pets. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are any other speakers here to speak on this topic? I want to thank you for bringing this to our attention and Mayor Protam O'Neil is working on many of our homeless activities, heading them up, so would you like to work with these law students directly and?
I would. If you reach out, we'll, we'll talk a little bit more. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you for coming this evening. Any other public comments, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll come back up here. I understand, Mr. Avery, you would like to record a vote differently on item number four on the consent calendar?
Just for a little cleanup and for the record, I'd like to register a no vote on item four.
Okay.
Thank you.
So noted. All right, so we will now move into public hearings. Item number 12, the appeal of the planning commission's denial of a minor use permit regarding for E art gallery. Saf, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protam and city council members. I'm Simone Jurta, I'm your community development director. Back in December, the planning commission heard an item for a minor use permit for a tattoo studio. The planning commission denied the application. The applicant has filed an appeal to the city council in the hopes that you would overturn that denial. We do have a short presentation for you this evening. I have Greg Ramirez, who's our principal planner, and Chelsea Krieger, who's our associate planner. We do have, we did receive, or the We did receive, or the City Council did receive, some public comments. We did receive an extensive one from Melinda Luthen this morning. Staff has not had a chance to review the letter that Ms. Luthen sent to us, so we can try to answer some questions, but we haven't reviewed that document yet. If you'd like, Madam Mayor, we do have a brief presentation.
Yes, please.
Go ahead, Chelsea.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. Chelsea Craigor with the Planning Division. As Simone did mention, this application is an appeal of a denial of a minor use permit for tattoo service. The application for the tattoo was originally submitted on July 30th of last year. The application is for the tattoo service aspect of the business only. The other aspect of the business includes an art gallery and studio, including art classes. A brief project description, per the submitted plans and per the applicant, the tenant space is just under 700 square feet. Proposed hours of operation are from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. daily. As mentioned, there is going to be some art instruction and classes, and per the application and recommended conditions of approval to the Planning Commission, the project would be limited to a maximum of two tattoo artists working at any one time. The application was heard by the Planning Commission on December 6. They did deny the application at a vote of 3-2 with two commissioners absent. The application was denied on the grounds that it was inconsistent with the zoning code, that it would create a proliferation of personal service uses in the Corona Del Mar area, that the site was not physically suitable for the use, and that it would negatively impact residential neighborhoods nearby.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor Protam would like to speak.
Can you go back a slide?
Sure.
When the Planning Commission made its decision on those four points below, did they make any factual determinations or were they simply blanket categorical determinations?
There were no factual determinations.
Thank you.
The applicant appealed the decision to the City Council on December 20. They submitted an appeal letter which contended that the use is compatible with the surroundings, that it will not negatively impact parking in the Corona Del Mar area, and that tattooing as a use is protected by the First Amendment. To give you some context of the area, this subject site is called out here 2721 East Coast Highway. And for a little bit of context, up here is the Sherman Library and Gardens. The project site is located in a commercial corridor zoning district, which is shown in pink there on the screen. The brown color is the R2 Residential Zoning District. The subject site is located downstairs in an existing two-story building. The stairs are visible from the street. As shown on the bottom picture, you can see the stairs there, and it is the first tenant space as you descend the stairs. Here's a project, a floor plan that was submitted by the applicant. It's an updated floor plan. This is not exactly the one that the Planning Commission saw. You can see that there are two tattoo stations proposed. There's also creative space, storage space, so that the space can also be used as a gallery and art studio. The Newport Beach zoning code considers tattoo a personal service restricted use. Similar personal service restricted uses include healing arts, such as acupuncture, tanning salons, and day spas. The state regulates tattoo uses through the California Safe Body Art Act, which ensures sanitary practices. And then lastly, federal law classifies tattoo uses as something that is protected by the First Amendment as a form of pure expression. The site is highlighted here in red. You'll see that the building is built to the property lines. There is no onsite parking required. Parking for tattoo uses is required at a rate of one space per 250 square feet. That's a standard retail rate. Some other uses that require this rate and could go in by right with no public hearing would be something like a fitness studio, a barber shop, or a beauty parlor, or a standard retail use. There are five permitted tattoo establishments in the city. The closest one to the subject property is Agape Art Collective, which was approved in 2018 by the Planning Commission. It's approximately four miles away. As Simone mentioned, we did receive a few public comments. We haven't had a chance to go through all of them and prepare responses yet, but the applicant and appellant is here, and I can also answer any questions that you have.
Okay, is the applicant here? Would you like to speak, please? Come forward.
Hello, I would like to start off by saying it's a pleasure and an honor to be in front of all of you tonight. This is John, he would be my attorney representing us as well.
John Heath Esquire, thank you.
What is your name, ma'am?
Savannah Gallegos. I am a young female artist passionately seeking to provide a necessary personal service to the community, offering custom art and the softest medical-grade body art workmanship in one of the cleanest studios that Orange County has to offer, along with the love of my life, Mr. Edgar Aguirre. Our proposal was heard and approved by two out of five planning commissioners in December. As there was much confusion as to why the majority of commissioners were in opposition, I am thankful for this opportunity to help you better understand my field of work, project plans, and alleviate concerns. For the past year, this proposed location, E Art Gallery, has been and will continue to primarily be utilized as a private, upscale, creative space, creating mine and Mr. Aguirre's personal artwork, as well as creating commissioned art for our private collectors that individually take hours, weeks, or months. Aside from creating canvas art, Edgar and I frequently and separately travel in and out of the country for art-related business purposes, such as exhibiting body art conventions or book-to-paint large-scale murals or canvas work for businesses and homes. After traveling for many years, working under enormous amounts of pressure in many different environments, we acknowledge Corona Del Mar's business element. Edgar and I have built up clientele from all over the world whom have always been scheduled by appointment. Hours of operation will be respectively set to Corona Del Mar's common business hours from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. daily, privately and by appointment only. Our last client of the day will be scheduled no later than 7:00 p.m. There will be no piercing services offered, and walk-ins will be respectfully turned away with a business card to schedule an appointment for a later date, which adding the condition of prohibiting walk-ins will also accommodate for potentially high parking demand. While it's rare for either of our schedules to be conflicting, there will only be two artists conducting body art at once. Three-hour drawing classes will be offered once a month and will consist of up to seven well-educated art students who've already learned the basics and could draw on their own. One-on-one art classes would be suitable for young people will also be offered. Although the body art area is completely separate from the art class area, there will be no body art appointments conducted during any art classes. The body art stations are also portable and will be placed out of sight in storage during any art classes. Loitering is a big concern to the public and to us, and I can assure you, due to the operational characteristics we are taking on, our conditions and regulations will guarantee there will be no loitering. The location is obscure from the public as you must walk through the building corridor from Pacific Coast Highway and walk down the stairs to reach the gallery. Although sign standards allow it, there is no desire, nor is it a necessity for my business to mention any body art-related verbiage on our public business signs. Our signs will be inconspicuous and will read "E Art Gallery" and "by appointment only." We acknowledge Harborview Elementary School is more than 1,000 feet away, and I have no interest in advertising to children, nor are children under 18 years old permitted in the establishment during body art appointments unless accompanied by a parent or legal guardian. As a necessity to operate a body art facility and a big concern to all of us, Edgar and I personally, as well as the facility of E Art Gallery, have been registered with the Orange County Health Department. E Art Gallery will be regularly inspected and regulated by strict health codes set by the California Safe Body Art Act to ensure that safe operating procedures are practiced. These strict health codes include two separate plans that must be onsite at all times, an infection prevention and control plan, and the other is a bloodborne pathogen exposure control plan. These plans prevent bloodborne pathogen illnesses and maximize sanitation standards to prevent cross-contamination. It is also a requirement to be certified by an OSHA Bloodborne Pathogens Training Site, just as any medical professional. As for all sharps, they are disposed of in a safe biohazard waste container and will be scheduled for pickup by an approved biohazard waste disposal company, all of which is regulated by the Orange County Health Department. Tattoos have been criticized by the stereotypes created while they were once realistic, when the majority of people getting tattoos were gangsters and sailors, although tattooing has been around for thousands of years to alternatively express culture, beliefs, and manhood in many cultures. Today in modern society, body art is in fact a cosmetic and could be therapeutic. People seek to cover up their medical surgeries, scars, mastectomies, and cancer scars. Most choose to express themselves or seek to make a unique fashion statement. It is common for clients to feel vulnerable, and it helps them relax and open up about their personal lives. We may not respond while focused, but we are always listening, and empathy is always given. E Art Gallery is a place where there is no judgment, and comfortability is purely personalized by the client. By the amount of public outreach, by petitions, and having ordinary conversations here, I know that the village of Corona Del Mar is ready to accept a small body art business, and the fact that societal acceptance on the appearance of tattoos has positively changed. More than 20% of residents and consumers here combined has a tattoo, or they love someone that does, thus decreasing the chances of undesirable clientele to none, given my clientele as well. Although everything isn't for everyone, I have never, nor will I ever, force anyone to consume the type of art that I offer. This has been my dream ever since I was a little girl. I have been a painter since age 16 and a professional body artist and muralist, traveling on my own at age 18, as well as teaching art classes as large as 82 people by the age of 19. Since both of these subjects are equally my passion in their own ways, it is extremely important, as a young woman in this male-dominated tattoo industry, to create a safe and peaceful environment for myself and my clients. Permanent makeup, cosmetic surgery offices, dental, hair, and nails are all common surrounding businesses that resemble mine very closely, most of which are personal services, operated by appointment only, business hours average from 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and sizes average 1,500 square feet, meaning my personal service business size, location, and operational characteristics do not differ from the surrounding businesses. Please allow us an opportunity to show you I could operate this business with integrity and respect in a place where body art is zoned. I have reviewed and agreed all recommendations on the staff report. When given the opportunity, myself and any of my artists will be enforcing all state regulations, laws, and health codes. I would be happy to answer any questions and address concerns you all may have, or simply go over any facts I have just stated. Thank you for listening and possibly welcoming this exclusive and innovative business to our beautiful village, Corona Del Mar.
Thank you. Staff, any other comments you want to make at this point?
We have none, thank you.
Okay, I'll bring it up here. Anybody, did you want to make some comments? Ms. Brenner?
Because this is in my district, I would like, I will be making the proposal that with the new information that we have received today, that we send this back to the Planning Commission. It has to be approved by the whole council in order to do that. But I just wanted to state that that's what I'm planning to do, and then we'll go ahead and we'll accept some public comments about this and see how the rest of the council feels about that. And I should divulge that I did meet with you at your studio and got to talk with you and your partner about what you proposed.
Just let me clarify what you're saying, Councilmember Brenner, that are you making a motion?
I'm going to make a motion after public comments, that we do so, that we send this back to the Planning Commission.
All right, and so based on your intended motion, then we will hold public comments regarding your motion about sending this back to the Planning Commission, so not on the merits of the application itself, on the appeal.
I have not yet made the motion, so I think that we should go ahead and accept public comments on this, but I'm letting people know that I will be making that motion.
One thing you could, possibly could do, is if I'm understanding correctly, is you're proposing to basically send it back to the Planning Commission for them to further consider it based on all the new information that was received. What you could do is just open up public testimony for that piece of it, to see if anyone has comments on that, and then if your motion doesn't pass and there's not support for it, then you could do the full public hearing and open it up for all the other items, for the substantive comments on it. But it may save everybody time as far as the public making comments, if they know it's just limited to what your proposed motion is at first.
Are you in agreement with that?
Yes, that's acceptable.
Okay, so why don't you restate, Mr. Harp, what we're going to be doing now?
So I think what the council is proposing is to open up public comment on a proposed motion to basically send the matter back to the Planning Commission for further consideration based on the new evidence and information that was received since this matter was at the Planning Commission, so that they can consider it, and of course, the Planning Commission can either deny it, approve it, or conditionally approve it, but all of that would happen down at the Planning Commission, so that they can consider all the new evidence that was submitted. So the council will be opening up public comments just on whether or not the public wants to have any input on sending it back to the Planning Commission. Then Councilmember Brenner will make a motion to do that, and if there's support from the council, that's what will happen. It'll go back to Planning Commission. If there isn't support for that, then the City Council will reopen public comment and the public hearing, so that people can make substantive comments regarding the actual application.
Okay, so if everyone is clear on that, you may be seated.
And actually, since you're there right now, do you have any comments on that proposal? Just since you're there already.
I would just like to know what evidence is, the new evidence?
There's actually a fair amount of evidence submitted by Melinda Luthen today, and that wasn't before the Planning Commission, when they considered the item. So it's probably a more well-reasoned decision to send it back to the Planning Commission. I think that's what's being proposed.
Okay.
But if you have any comments or thoughts on it, since you're up there right now, might as well get yours first.
No comments.
Would that be acceptable to you?
Yes.
All right, so we'll open it up to public comment from others in the audience who wish to speak on this matter of referring it to the Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any comments concerning submitting this matter back to the Planning Commission? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back up here. Ms. Brenner, or Mr. O'Neal, Mayor Protam, did you want to say something?
I'll defer to Councilmember Brenner. I'd like to hear what the motion is before I make a comment.
Okay, Ms. Brenner, did you want to make a comment?
Given the new evidence, it seems appropriate for the Planning Commission to give further consideration to this matter after the public had the opportunity to testify. The motion would be to refer this back to the Planning Commission for further consideration.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Any comments up here?
Yeah, there are two things I wonder if you'd take as a friendly amendment. The first is, I am a little concerned about the lack of factual basis that came up through the Planning Commission, so I'd very much like it to see if you'd be willing to take this. I'd like it to make sure that if this is denied, that there be sections of the denial resolution, that they have to give us factual information for exactly why they are denying it. I think that seems to be fairly consistent with the obligations dealing with the First Amendment on this issue. And so I'd like to, am I giving you heartburn there, Mr. Harp?
Well, I think that no matter whether they approve it or deny it, they should have good factual findings. You know, they can do either one, but they should have good factual findings so that if it is appealed, you have a better basis for a record to consider that, so whether denial, approval, conditionally approved, I think that those factual findings are important. are important.
Okay, and then given also the, given also what, it's gone to the planning commission, it's coming back to us, and then we're considering sending it back, I would just recommend having it heard by the planning commission within 30 days.
Absolutely, in a timely manner.
So are both of those?
Acceptable, yes.
Okay, to the second as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, shall we vote?
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
All right, we'll go to item 13, which is proposing a six-month extension to a Hoag Development Agreement. Mr. Juerges or Mr. Juerges?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Give us just one second here to set up. We don't have a staff presentation. This item is an existing development agreement with Hoag, Hoag Hospital, everybody is very familiar with Hoag. Their existing development agreement will expire in March. We've been working with Hoag for the last year on negotiating an extension to their development agreement or even possibly a brand-new development agreement. We just don't have, we haven't come to a conclusion on negotiations. So both sides, both Hoag and staff, have agreed that, you know, just a six-month extension would be realistic for us just to conclude our negotiations. This item was presented to the planning commission and they are recommending approval to the city council. Jim Campbell has been working on the project, he's the project manager, so we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, thank you. Any questions from any member of the council? Mr. Hurdman?
No question, I'd just like to move staff recommendation.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, let's go out to the public. Any comments, please come forward.
Mayor Dixon, members of the city council, my name is Jim Moser. I have two comments about this agenda item. First one is that in the early days of my council watching, when development agreements were being negotiated, they were negotiated by members of the city council. The council appointed an ad hoc committee to negotiate the agreement, and then it came back to the council. The ad hoc committee always seemed to be Ed Solich and Steve Rosansky, I don't know why. I don't know that that was a better system than having the staff negotiate the agreements. I don't know which is better or worse, but nobody officially changed the system anywhere, so I'm wondering why at one time the council negotiated development agreements, now the city staff seems to be doing that for you. That's comment number one. Comment number two is the intent of development agreements is to protect some right to do development in the contingency that laws might change during the time that the development was entitled. And normally it is a right to make certain building, entitlement to build a certain number of square feet that might not have been completed in the 25 years that the agreement was in effect. And usually in the annual review that the development agreements have, there is a presentation showing what the current status is, like for Newport Center, each year, these used to come to the city council, they now go to the zoning administrator, there was a table saying Irvine Company had a right to build this much stuff, currently they built that much, they have this much to go. This is a very thick agenda packet here, but I find nothing telling me what right the Hoag Hospital is trying to protect with their development agreement. Apparently the city committed to some amount of square footage or towers or whatever, and I'm just curious to know how much of that is left that they want a development agreement to protect. They want it to protect something? What is it that they're wanting to protect? Exactly how much development is left? I heard somebody offhand say that they had a right to develop another 500,000 square feet. I have no idea where that number came from, if it's right, or, that's my comment, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Juerges, did you want to just, it's a matter of public record, what the current development agreement is, correct?
Correct. The development agreement is attached in the staff report, there's about 450,000 square foot of additional square footage that they're entitled to develop, and that's what they're trying to protect.
Okay. Any other comments from the public, please come forward? See none? Come back up here. Oh, Mr. Hurdman, did you want, no, that's the same one, Mr. Duffield?
Thank you, Mayor. I think that this is a great opportunity to help a world-class operation and within the confines of our city, and I'm just appalled, I'm shocked that we haven't addressed this earlier. Hoag has grown from a very small hospital to a world-class hospital. Until you've been there and it saves your life, I guess you don't have the same feelings, but we probably, most all of us are going to end up there in some capacity. So right now, I would point out that, you know, the medical profession, everything's expensive, super expensive, and this is a great way to make it even more expensive. Just charge the hospital millions of dollars for a development fee. Now, I know that they have millions of dollars and they do a lot of things, but they are not, they are a not-for-profit operation, and it just seems to me this gives us an opportunity to work with them in a way that might be compromising so that they can do a better job for all of us. And I'm looking forward to working that, with that concept and not trying to hinder or harm them in any way, because again, you can have all the money in the world, but if you don't have your health, you've got nothing. So I think that this is a great time to rally around Hoag and do what is best for all of us in a way that's compromising, I'm not saying it should be free, but I do think that there needs to be some sympathy to that cause, because it is a fabulous cause, saving lives. Thank you.
Thank you, and why don't we, no more comments, let's take a vote.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I have to read the ordinance title. Ordnance number 2019-6, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach, amending a development agreement between the City of Newport Beach and Hoag Memorial Hospital Presbyterian.
That's it? That's it? All right, we'll go to current business, item number 14, to amend the membership of the General Plan Update Steering Committee.
Yeah, Mayor Dixon, we don't have a staff presentation for this one, this is an item that's coming back per council direction from the last meeting to expand the General Plan Executive Committee to two additional members, and the resolution here, we'll do so, and if approved tonight, then the application period opens tomorrow and will close in one week, and then following selection, come back to council for confirmation.
Okay. Ms. Brenner, I see your name, is there, did you want to say something?
Yes, I'd like to make that motion.
All right, we have a second. All right, any comments up here? Take it out to the public? See no comments? Let's, any more comments here? Nope, let's bring it to a vote.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Okay, item number 15, introduction of an ordinance to the municipal code relating to on-street parking impacts due to construction activities and the overall time a construction project may take. Mr. Juerges, please.
Thank you, good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Potem, and city council members. About a year ago, the council asked that staff kind of look into and come back with some recommendations for changes that would address some of the parking impacts that our residents have experienced due to all the construction activity that we have throughout the community. So we've been diligently working on this and getting some feedback from the community. Samir Gosin is here, he's our deputy director and chief building official, he'll be making a presentation, we have about 20 slides to go through, kind of explaining the history of how we started through this, and our recommendations, and what is in that ordinance that is in front of you. So we'll go ahead and jump through into the presentation.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Samir Gosin. So yeah, we'll talk today about the construction parking impacts on residents. And what I want to start with basically is indicating what is the factors driving the construction? And the parking impact is that strong economy, robust construction activity, high demand for housing, and high property values. This is a slide that shows us a little bit of the activity that we have been tracking for the last at least four years, and primarily the focus is I want to just kind of highlight the 2017, 2018 fiscal year. We have issued 184 new single-family dwellings and 57 duplexes, that amounts to 241 projects in this one current year. Not to mention that we do track the overall activity of the building department by issue, by the number of building permits we issue. In 2017, 2018, we issued 6,766 permits. The year prior to that, we issued 6,902 permits. And if you look at the average life of a project in terms of what it takes to construct, especially the complex projects, some of those will take two years, some of them will take a little bit more. In a reasonable world, we can probably build these projects within 10 months to 14 months. So you could imagine that the level of activity is incredible. With regard to the history, on January 23rd, city council directed staff to address the residential parking impact resulting from this construction activity. On April 24th, city council held a study session with staff, with staff proposing some elements or some ideas. And in late 2018, staff met with residents in different areas to address the impact and get some feedback. So we did a public outreach with members of the Balboa Peninsula Point Association, we did another meeting with Oasis Center, Senior Center, I'm sorry, in Corona Del Mar, and we did another meeting with Lido Isle Board members. And some of the common themes that were repeated throughout these different meetings were lack of parking enforcement, lack of notification and communication from builders, builders have no consideration for the neighbors, implement a parking permit program for builders to kind of restrict the amount of vehicles, construction vehicles on a given site, concern for delaying projects, which is, as we just discussed earlier, an average project will take 10 months to 14 months, if it's not very complex. Some of those who have basements could take, you know, an additional maybe six months to a year. So therefore, the neighbors who are living next to these larger, complex projects wants to really, these projects to get done fast. And the other issue was the lack of noise control. We have met with builders as well. We met with local builders to talk with them and figure out what is the best way moving forward to address some of those parking issues. So we thought about limiting Saturday work to see how does that play out with the contractors? And for the most part, most of them said, you know what, that's a great idea because it allows us to rest. Most of them are handling more than one project. In fact, most, some of them are handling as much as eight or 10 projects in a given time. But that provide delays in construction. When you look at a 10-month period or a 14-month period for a project and you miss every Saturday, that could potentially delay the project. The other parking impacts that they saw is really, you know, it fluctuates with the economy. When we have a good economy, things are going to be good. If we have a bad economy, that problem will go away. So limiting the number of permits for trades was another concept we discussed with them to see if, you know, we could do that. And one of the issues that they had is that it is bad enough to be able to get a subcontractor to a job site. Try to limit, you know, the number of subs on a given site will even further delay the project. The other thing that we have heard from them is the shortage of labor is delaying the project on average four to six months. So staff's recommendation is to restrict construction activity noise on Saturday between Memorial Day and Labor Day. This will make it seasonal, this would allow basically less construction that's driven by loud noise, it allows the residents to have more of a peaceful weekends, especially that we service about 10 million people a year, and I know most of them come to us in the summertime, to our beaches. We wanted to require a project information sign on projects that require fencing. We have an ordinance in the municipal code that if a project meets certain level, like 75% of its floor, of remodel, or a new building would require a fencing. Hence, we would want to provide a sign, a project information sign, to help residents if they needed to reach someone or contact someone, that they have that information available. The other thing that came out of this is we wanted to limit the length of time in construction. We know of few projects that tend to take more than five years, and those tend to be a sore for the neighbors, an eyesore for the neighbors, I mean, and it seems to kind of drive a lot of complaints. The other thing was entertaining the possibility of parking enforcement during the peak season. So with limiting Saturday construction noise between Memorial Day and Labor Day, it still allows property owners to maintain their properties. The issue is we want to control, you know, the noise, or the loud construction noise, and it allow for emergency repairs. And what I mean by emergency repair, somebody who loses his water heater, or they lose a, you know, something that is urgent that they need must fix, it would allow them to do that. The exception to limiting noise on Saturday is we want to allow multifamily residential and non-residential projects, which we refer to as commercial, and allow public works projects to continue. This is a sample of a project sign that would basically include the project address, contact information, telephone number, who is the contractor, and the permit reference, and the email, as well as code enforcement reference phone number, parking enforcement reference phone number, and the building inspection. So if somebody has a concern or a complaint, they can easily call us or call the contact person. Construction management plan is something we've entertained to introduce as a new component or a new requirement for new residential buildings and new duplexes. And what that does, it allows us to basically look into what are we doing with construction impact, especially in the neighborhoods that are impacted, they have more than one project within 200 feet. We want to basically allow the builder to think clearly about identifying available parking locations, loading areas, areas for material delivery and equipment and supplies. To the extent feasible, we wanted to see if they can use any off-site parking for contractors or subcontractors. We want them to be able to deliver, you know, material equipment with some kind of a schedule, so the neighbors are aware of it ahead of time, and they can, you know, have a better success in not blocking streets or impacting residents. To the extent feasible, we want to limit the number of trades on site, and some other conditions that impacts traffic and right-of-way.
Madam Mayor, if I can go ahead and add, so this is really, instead of a construction management plan, we labeled that incorrectly, it's actually a parking management plan. You know, the situation that we have currently is that with all these construction projects out there, and what we've heard from the residents is that there's no consideration or empathy from the construction project site versus the neighbors. This proposal for a parking management plan puts, forces the builders to actually put some thought into what, how are they going to impact their community, how are they going to impact the residential streets? And so that's the primary component of this parking management plan.
As long as you stop the comment flow right there, I want to ask a question. Is this, what do other cities do? Just to give some comparison.
In fact, I have a slide on that.
Okay.
Okay, so we wanted to kind of talk about--
Excuse me, I'm sorry, one more question, Mr. Hurdman has a question.
Could we go back possibly to slide 12 or 13? It's the one that placed a time limit on the construction period. What about, my question is, what about existing projects that have exceeded that, that time limit?
So we do have a future slide, we haven't shown it yet, but it is, we're going to propose a five-year time limit. It doesn't affect, it's not retroactive.
Okay.
Sorry.
Thank you.
I'm going to go back to my, where we left off after-- Okay, so we're going to basically have a notification process for parking management plan, and in case of a potential parking conflict, we want to issue a notification letter to the owner or the developer, basically to figure out when they're going to commence the implementation and comply with a parking management plan. If that doesn't occur, of course, you know, we have the potential to issue citation for Construction time limit basically restricts the length to a maximum of five years. Again, we have had few projects that kind of linger on more than five years, and those tend to be problematic. However, we have left the ability for the building official to issue an extension if there were some special circumstances, you know, with a given project by which it takes more than five years. So what are other cities doing?
Just real quick, just jump in right there, because I know you had a question about the existing permits. It would apply to existing permits, but the five-year clock would start to run from kind of the effective date of the ordinance, so it would apply to new and existing, but everybody gets five more years.
So if someone who had a project that's been going on for seven or eight years, and they've been consistent about renewing their permit every six months by hammering a nail into a piece of wood to show that they've done some work, when they, would it be possible to have that time limit begin the next time that the permit was renewed?
So it actually will begin for all existing permits, they'll have five years from the effective date of the ordinance, so-- They'll have five years from the effective date of the ordinance, so your scenario would apply to that.
It would.
It would apply to all new permits that are issued, as well as to existing permits--
Very good, okay.
--for five years from the effective date.
All right, thank you.
Okay, to proceed forward then, I, we've kind of checked with a bunch of cities. Not much really is happening with regard to construction parking impacts in other cities, with the exception that the city of Seal Beach, they issue one-year parking permit in one district that they have, they label as the old district. Outside of that, City of Laguna Beach have what they call a requirement for staging plans, especially for hillside developments and tight lots. And just, you know, for those of us who are familiar with Laguna Beach, they have a lot of hillside areas and tight streets. Implementation, if this is approved, we're recommending an implementation day of 60 days after the adoption. This would allow time for contractors to notify their clients, would allow staff to inform development community at the counter when they come and approach us for building permits. If we, if the council wishes to, you know, take advantage of the seasonal parking enforcement, we are recommending one officer for 16-week period, that's the peak season. There's a cost factor with that for $30,000, that it does include a vehicle allowance, and a projected revenue offset from fines or citation is about $25,000. Corrections in the ordinance, I wanted to say, we have Section 10.28.040, subsection E, exception number three. We'd like to add the words "or non-residential" after the words "three or more dwelling units", and we want to make a correction to section 15.90.030, subsection C, to change the reference section from 15.90.050 to section 15.90.040. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll look, we need to look that up. Thank you, Samir. Question on the parking management plan, is this custom, I mean, you cited the other cities, but is this a custom procedure? I understand either the architect typically, or the contractor does facilitate or handle for the property owner the details of a parking management plan. This is something that is customary.
Yes, I think there's like any other requirements, I think it would be within the hands of the architect initially, and certainly the builder, to kind of establish the type of timelines, because the trades come to a project in a different, in different times. And there are times, or specifically two times, when the construction level is impacted, that is during what we call mechanical plumbing and electrical, and the time of the finishes, where you have basically a bunch of subcontractors literally at the same time trying to complete the construction. Those are two critical phases. The rest of them generally are not that problematic, but nonetheless, those are the two phases in any construction. And every project requires, you know, all these different sub-trades to be present in order to get to a point of completion.
And I may add, Madam Mayor, the architect is typically the designer in charge, and the architect would be the one to kind of produce that parking management plan.
One thing I did not see or catch in the presentation, maybe you said it, but at least in my neighborhood where many of these residential issues occur, and you did address the fact that projects are typically longer than 12 months, and I certainly can attest to that, and just in my community on Lido, where density is a fact of life, and so multiple projects on each street are occurring simultaneously. So it's not so much one project, but it's, as I've said this before, standing at my front step today, I could see one, two, three, four, five, I could see from my front door five different projects, and demo projects, not just remodel, we're not talking remodeling. In fact, I want to make that clear in your proposal, we're just talking demolition, rebuild projects.
That's correct.
So, and so just to clarify on the parking management, it's to take into consideration the additional work that's going on a particular street.
You're correct, Madam Mayor, the parking management plan, the idea is to look at the cumulative impacts for projects that, as, completely your example on Lido, where you have multiple, you know, two, three, four projects within the same block, and the idea is that if they all had a parking management plan that was reviewed by the city, there'd be some thought process on how the parking is kind of divvied out amongst the, kind of the contractors. You know, everybody's computing, competing for those tight spaces on those residential streets.
Yes. Okay, Mr. Duffield.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. So I was concerned with the five-year thing. Obviously, a commercial building that's large would take considerable more time than a house, but have you, did you consider the, you know, five years to build a house, that's a, that's a long, long time. Two, three, three years is a long time. Are we stuck on this five-year thing? Is there a reason you chose five?
No, we, we're not stuck on the five-year. We did present some thoughts and ideas to the council last year in 2018, and it seemed five years was kind of the consensus. We do look at this timeframe, it affects some of these bigger commercial projects, and if everybody knows the Vu project that sits on the waterside on the peninsula, it took five years to build. It's, it's one of the most complex types of projects ever to build. So we do have some exceptions to this rule, that if it's a complex project, that the building official, Samir, can grant them some exceptions and some further extensions. But we're not stuck on the five years.
Yeah, I would be, I would be hesitant to give someone five years to build a residential home, but if it was a huge apartment complex, maybe it'd be more sympathetic. But when you give people an inch, they take a mile, so I don't know.
Well, I know that on Lido, there's one particular house that's been under construction since 2011, and to Mr. Hurdman's point, because I've checked with planning, that they continually keep their permits current, so they keep pounding a nail on the wall. So, Mr. Mayor Potem.
So I kind of want to get into the language of the ordinance a little bit, because I'd like to make sure I'm understanding the process of what we're trying to enact here. So let's, let's start with a couple of basics. The first one is, does this apply inside gated HOAs? Is the way I read the ordinance, it does.
Yes.
That's, that's how I've read the ordinance. It makes no, it makes no difference whether you're inside an HOA, subject to their own parking rules, or subject to the city's, city's rules.
That's correct.
Okay. And then working through the issue, I'm trying to understand the application process. So let's say I come in and I'm doing a project on Balboa Island, and then let's say the next person comes in and they're doing a project up in Newport Coast. Newport Coast, slightly more spread out than Balboa Island. And so if I'm coming in from Newport Coast and I'm looking at what the application requirements are under 15.90.030B for the application, the, if I, if I'm doing this, what I'd have to be doing is I'd have to be filling out all this information, including B3, which is a description of all parking locations available, and then five says the location of parking, including off-site parking locations to be secured and provided for, et cetera, et cetera. And what happens if I'm in an area where frankly, you don't need off-site parking because it's so spread out, number one? And then number two, as I read the staff report description, and then I'm trying to read C, I'm trying to understand C, I'm sorry, you know what, the next question is actually fairly complicated, so I want to make sure, let's stop for a moment and ask you those questions. So the difference is pretty clear between building in Coronel Mar, building in Balboa Island, building on the peninsula, Lido, and then you start getting out into different areas of the city. If I'm in, for example, Big Canyon, One Ford Road, Newport Coast, all of Newport Coast, Spyglass, I mean, those are very different parking requirements, but we're doing kind of a one-shot-fits-all approach here, and so I'm trying to understand, I, I'm, I am an applicant, trying to fill this out. What am I going to be saying in this that makes sure that you understand the differences and in what the, what the requirements are going to be?
Thank you, Mayor Potem O'Neill. So you are right, it is in one ordinance to fit all those areas that you identified, those locations, but we left some language in the ordinance to allow flexibility from the staff standpoint, to identify that Newport Coast is different than the peninsula or Balboa Island. We use words as "may be required," in a sense that if you can't, if you cannot specifically meet some of these requirements, again, it's a "may" terminology. And at the same time, it may not be this, what's in the provisions in the ordinance are not the only extent, it could go beyond that for special circumstances. But we provided some language in the code that each parking management plan is going to have to stand on its own and reflect those specific areas. Newport Coast is different than Balboa Island, which is different than the peninsula, and we think that language in the ordinance kind of allows for that flexibility.
All right, and then, and then when we're looking at, let's go down to C, which is issuance and denial. B specifically references Community Development Director or his or her delegee, delegate, boy, I can't pronounce that word, did I just say it right?
Designee.
Designee, I'm sorry, thank you, designee. C, it didn't sound right. C is issuance and denial, it says if the Community Development Director finds the construction management. Are you actually going to be reviewing every single one?
No, I'm going to, I'm going to delegate down and have, I'll have designees.
All right, I would suggest probably changing that language.
Understood.
Because, yeah, I don't think you want to look at all of them. The, so this, I think this is a great, I think this is a very good first shot. I think that there is some work, a little bit of work to be done, and here's a couple of suggestions. The first one is, I'm very aware of what gated communities require in terms of their HOAs, and the bylaws and the requirements and all of the parking requirements that go along with that. People move into those kinds of HOAs specifically so that they have their, these very specific parking requirements, and some, some of them up in Newport Coast in particular have very strict fire lane requirements as well. I would strongly prefer that no one in a gated community in particular, or at least subject, I'm not sure actually, and I have to, I have to, I'd have to think about this, but they might not even be, need to be gated, they might just need to be in an HOA. If they are, if their HOA governs parking requirements, I don't think the city needs to get involved in those. I haven't heard a single complaint from anyone in an HOA about parking for construction purposes.
But we think it was an HOA.
Well, and see, that's why I have to ask the question. Lido is--
And CCNR, are we a parking problem?
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, I, I don't want--
A gated community, maybe that's the distinction.
Maybe it is. I'm just trying to think this through, because for me, I don't want to have residents who already are paying an HOA to also have to pay their architect to create a parking management plan that I guarantee is already going to be compliant with the HOA. And if it's not compliant with the HOA, I can also guarantee they're going to hear from their HOA. And this isn't, this does add a layer of expense, there's no question it does. And so I'm trying to figure out a way of making sure that we don't have this, some added burdens to folks who aren't, aren't, they're just not subject to this, this concern. The other one is, instead of having a really specific, requiring the architect themselves to create this specific parking management plan, it strikes me that we know our neighborhoods really well, and I think that your department really knows our neighborhoods really well. And so I'm wondering if instead of requiring these very specific one-offs, rather than doing that, as part of the application, you have these gradations of, check the box next to it. Like, the very first one is, it'd almost be like a grading system, like A to F. A, there's nothing, there's no real requirement, just comply with the normal parking requirements, all the way down to F, which is, it is so compacted in this area that you have got to do, you've got to have off-site parking, drop your folks off, and then come pick them back up at the end of the day, kind of thing. And if, for some reason, if someone checks the box next to B when they're really a D, I mean, our folks will know that, and they'll say, no, it's a D, and then they can appeal it under this system. But we can reduce the cost quite a bit on our residents who are making applications if, instead of requiring these very specific one-off parking management plans, we instead as a, as a, as a community development department, create a system where they say, they have a check the boxes, you'll know. I mean, I just know you'll know. But those are the, my concern with creating this, and I think, I think it's totally appropriate. I have heard from a number of people on Lido, Coronel Mar, the island, peninsula, this is an issue, there's no question it's an issue. I just don't want to impact other areas of the city that aren't complaining, and on top of that, I would very much like to see a little bit more streamlined system that doesn't require the one-off architect-driven approach that I think we're setting up right now.
Mr. Avery.
Yeah, I think this is going to be a handful to administer all the way along, but, you know, it's, I think it's worth trying, and maybe we obviously have a revisit at some point to adjust. I think Councilmember O'Neill's suggestion's a good one, having those gradations. I think the five-year deal, you know, every neighborhood, large neighborhood, has a house like that, that's just been going and going, but ultimately, what could the city do? They go past the five years, what are we going to subjugate against, somebody that's in a financial bind and can't finish their house, or they're doing it themselves, and they're just going along, and do we start fining them? The reality of it is, I mean, all of us want to get construction done as soon as we can, and so the reasons, I'm sure you've heard all the reasons why these projects go on and on, they go all over the place, but just five years on the face of it seems like a really long time to me, but then I think, what could we really do? You know, we really want to subjugate against a homeowner for taking that kind of time? Obviously, they're in pain over it as well. So it's a tough situation, and I've got a few of those in my district, and it just goes on and on, and I've talked with you about them before. It's something we can't do too much about, except, but I wouldn't want to be punitive, you know, I don't know. I think it's good to have the time limit, for sure, but the reality of forcing someone to finish their house is pretty tough.
Although, we've done it before, didn't we? There was one house in Dover, was it Dover Shores?
Area.
Yeah, that, we did take legal action. Mr. Duffield.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. So I just want to cite the Bay Shore example for you. So what, what we had was a home that went on for seven years, and the homeowners association rules said one year, so it was a little over. But what I remember about it was that the board was frightful of the deep pockets of this individual, and so we'd all talk about it and roll our eyes and say, well, you know, this gentleman, and so we, everyone went, ooh, so that's why it went on for seven years. And so I tend to agree with Councilman Avery here, it's really tough, and the one that was in Dover Shores was different. I don't, do they have homeowners association there?
Oh, yeah.
Do they do? Well, they couldn't do anything with it either, and I know the city had tough go with it. So I think we need to have attorneys and something, so get in here or something, create some special rule or something, but it was miserable for the neighbor, especially the fellow across the street, if you can imagine for seven years looking in an outhouse.
Oh, great. Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you. Unless you're William Randolph Hearst, you shouldn't be building in perpetuity. If you know Hearst Castle, he never finished. So I would support CAP. To Mayor Potem O'Neill's point, some communities are not gated, but they're private, so perhaps it would be gated and private communities, that means that, and that they do their own roads and they have their own restrictions. It's sort of one step smaller than all HOAs, but one step larger than gated. Could you go back a couple slides to the one you showed about the grandfathering in or the slow?
I'm sorry, Councilmember Muldoon, which slide was that?
It mentioned the 60-day timeline you would offer.
That's just the implementation, implementation date of that ordinance.
Okay, so hypothetically, what would that look like? What's 60 days after when, what would that be?
So hypothetically, if, if we were to pass on this today and go to second reading in March 7th, 60 days later would be May 7th, the ordinance will take effect, and we wanted that timeframe just in case contractors have their contracts with the property owners.
Okay, and I'm a little concerned that anything we do could change projects or quotes contractors given. So I noticed that we envisioned a May 25th summertime cutoff anyways, so perhaps to the end of May would be better, it's a little bit longer than 60. But I think I like where staff is going with this, actually. Thank you. Thank you.
Well, I, March 12th is our next council meeting, so that would be the second reading if we did something tonight, then go-
You're correct. I was thinking of planning commission, sorry.
Yeah. Mr. Herdman.
I would just like to support what Councilman Duffield said as far as a three-year construction period as opposed to a five-year. I would, I think you're still in support of that, I'm not sure. Okay.
With extensions.
Is that your comment? Okay. Any other comments up here? Why don't we go out, out to the public? Any comments from the public? Please come forward.
Mayor and Council, Tim Stokes. I like all the great rules, but I'm concerned about the enforcement of all these great rules. We don't currently have Saturday code enforcement, so how do we code enforce a provision on Saturday? If you call and you get that wonderful number, it just goes to an answering machine, it gets picked up on Tuesday, Wednesday, but you had that perceived perception on Saturday when I threw a party, I wanted that noise stopped. So that, that'd be my concern right now, and I don't think it's, it's just simply not enough code enforcement to manage the process. I think you're going to have to up what Simone asked for at the planning session, another code enforcement officer on a full-time basis, baby. That's my comment.
Thank you. Any other comments? Please come forward.
W.R. Dildean. I've been a licensed contractor since 1964. I built five duplexes down on the Peninsula. I think this whole thing sucks. Number one, those are the smallest, and in Corona del Mar, the smallest lots in this, about 20-foot by 80-foot. I have a 30-foot by supposedly 80-foot, had it surveyed. It's less than that. I've been paying not much, less than 150 bucks a year on, for additional footage that the county, back then, recorded. But the biggest thing is-
Are you talking to the microphone?
I left here in '69, and I'll tell you, it was a drinking problem. I had to get out of here. And I got involved in state politics. And I served on a state commission dealing with construction for over 30 years. This city has a rotten reputation, or residential. Now, the big boys can come in here and fight and do it. I think you're wasting a heck of a lot of money. Number one, the report was at 500 and some cars were residents and 200, and some were contractors. Why are those residents parking on the street? Can't they park their car in the garage? The code says we have to have X number of spaces, and then we store it in here. You can't get a car in. Down where on the block I live in, that's the biggest problem. Half of their garages are so small, they were built for Model Ts and Model As. They're still there. I, I think this is a waste of money. It's going to cost the people more. Lot of these projects are not financed. Those that are financed, the people are paying interest every day. Tracks, that's what they think of. Of course, the economic situation in the country now, there's a lot of money available. It's not that expensive. Get one of the big track developers in here, they're first going on, it's a lickety-split. Other big thing is, the state hasn't got the money to come down and check on every commercial vehicle, every, I forget how, license plate. All the photographs that they showed, I have a couple minutes more.
Not a couple minutes, 30 seconds. What more did you say? Say it, 30 second? No?
There's a picture that they have showed of every truck.
So you're saying that that's a state law and then trucks-
That is a state law.
And trucks here in Newport Beach are working without the proper identification? Okay. All right. Was there one more thing you want to say?
I don't have much longer.
Well, no, you want to say one more thing on your comment?
Pardon?
Did you want to say one more thing?
No, I just, the attitude of this city compared to other attitudes. I was up in the Central Coast area when I was president. I went all Northern California. Southern California, where I was raised, lot different than Northern California. Oh, the League of California Cities, nobody from-
Okay. All right, thank you.
Other issue, I can talk with you later, but it's sad to me.
Okay.
I wonder why they-
All right, thank you.
Have so much time fighting this. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Yes, sir?
Richard Burns, 215 Point Setia, Corona del Mar. 50-year resident, 40 years in Corona del Mar in the 200 block. And my comments are basically on what I've observed in Old Corona del Mar and the flower streets. And virtually every house on my alley between Orchid and Point Setia has been torn down and rebuilt. And I think the staff has it a little bit wrong in that they're only dealing with the parking situation. Well, you know, on Mondays, they, they sweep on my side of the street, on the, on the, and then on Tuesday, on the other side of the street. So the parking becomes a big problem. So where do the contractors park? They park in the alley. And your, your basic problem is, there's no enforcement. There is no enforcement for 40 years in Corona del Mar. And one example is, I was walking down Ocean Boulevard today, like I do every Tuesday, and I'm watching the enforcement for gas blowers sweeping the, the street. So who's the number one that's blowing the street? It's the, it's a city contractor. Their name is, whatever they are, they're, they're, they're cutting the grass, and they're, they've got gas blowers. So why doesn't the city enforce its own rules? You guys pass, not you guys, some city council way before you, passed this law saying you can't have gas-powered leaf blowers, but there's no enforcement. I walk down the street, there's policemen patrolling Ocean Boulevard, the windows down, they can hear the gas blower, and then you have these old guys, my age, with gray hair in, in a police vehicle that says that they're volunteers. Why doesn't anybody enforce? Please address that issue. You don't do that. My recommendations are, you need a 24-hour announcement to the homeowners in that block that some large vehicle is going to come down the block, the alley, and block the street. And they've got enormous cranes, because people are building these enormous houses with subterranean facilities, and, and the alley's blocked for the entire hour. So you need 24-hour announcement to all the, the people. Some of the contractors are doing a good job. Patterson is one, and he bills, what, 10 or 15 at the same time in Old Corona del Mar, and he notifies the people. And when there's a problem like there was with me, he's announced it. And you need, you, the staff has not addressed the issue of major remodels. There's a major remodel across the street from me right now. Four months have gone on, and there's as many trucks on Point Setia as there is on new construction. I think, and this is, and the owner is somewhere outside of Newport Beach, you need to have the major remodel people post their contact information so that that person can be contacted when the subcontractor, who doesn't care about throwing trash into the street or whatever, you, you contact, you, you confront them, say, hey, it's not my problem, it's, it's the owner's problem. There's no contractor involved. So you need to address that issue as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Any other public comments? Please come forward.
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. Regarding the leaf blowers, I think that earlier council may have exempted the city from its own rules.
Fire council.
As to this ordinance, the, the city has long restricted construction on Sundays, citywide for all kinds of construction. This ordinance, as you appreciate, is going to put a new restriction similar to that on Saturdays, again, citywide. The original rationale for that, if I understand, we heard a slightly different one tonight, but the original rationale for that, if I understand the staff report, is that in the areas where we have the 10 million visitors per year during the summer on Saturdays, it is very, very crowded, and we don't want the construction. So, putting further demand on the parking. As the Mayor Portem and Councilman O'Neill pointed out, or Councilman Muldoon, different parts of the city are different, and not all of them on summer Saturdays are hugely impacted by visitor parking. So the idea that you're going to prohibit or restrict construction in those areas on summer Saturdays is really contrary to this idea that you have, that you want the projects to be speeded up and completed in a timely way. You would think you would be wanting them to be working on Saturday to get, get the job done. And so I'm not sure that the rationale about parking doesn't fit. I don't know exactly why we're having that be a citywide ban rather than just in the areas where we have a congestion problem. As to the parking management plans, I first wanted to point out, and, and again, in all these things, it's careful to actually look at what you're adopting, that the mayor and perhaps some of the other of you have the idea that this requirement to produce a plan applies only to a tear-down and rebuilding. That's not what I see on page 1515 of your staff report. It says it applies to any new construction. New construction could be making a dwelling unit. It can be adding 50% to the value of a house. And in fact, a dwelling unit could be just an accessory dwelling unit. So somebody constructing a new accessory dwelling unit has to come up with one of these programs, which is, it's laborious both for them and for the city staff. And in addition to that, question I asked in writing, I got the comment in very late, after going through the trouble of producing this plan, perhaps for the accessory dwelling unit or for whatever, it actually is, applies, are going to be used only if it happens that there's two construction projects going on within 200 feet of each other. There are areas of the city where that's common, there's areas where it's not common, and the construction would be widely spaced out, yet the person has to produce the plan, the city staff has to review that. And so I would be wondering how many such plans the city staff expects to receive that are actually never going to be implemented. A lot of busy work, it seems to me, for things that are not going to be used. And then finally, I did not hear the question, whether it's a three- or a five-year limit that we impose, I didn't hear the answer to Councilman Avery's question of exactly what we plan to do if the construction is not completed. It's fine to have a limit, but what are we going to do-
Okay, thank you.
-if they don't comply.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. O'Neill, Mayor Portem.
I gotta admit, this is the first time I've actually referenced my district in the, in the context of any discussion up at the dais, but I don't want any of this applied into District 7. And I, and I, it's just not necessary, and it'll add extra expense to absolutely everyone in Spyglass and Newport Coast and all the way down, and no one's asked for it in that area. No one, to my knowledge, needs it. And I think that if we're going to move forward with an ordinance like this, that we, we probably need to be way more specific in terms of who's asking for it and then actually implementing it in those areas. And I, I will say, maybe with the exception, five-year construction limit probably should be a citywide issue, but the rest of it, in terms of a parking management plan, the more I'm thinking about it, and the more I'm thinking about the application process, and the more I'm thinking about, it's just not, it's just not necessary in, in pretty good-sized areas of the city, and certainly all of District 7, and actually probably a good swath of District 6, too. And, oh, that's true, and 5, given that, I mean, I don't- Big Canyon, Port Streets, One Ford Road is actually in District 3, so there's a large group of the city that just doesn't need this, and I don't want to add that additional burden. So I would like to see this come back. I'd like to see it discussed a little bit more, but as it's currently written, I, I can't support it.
Yeah. Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you. I'll add my district to the list. I do think there's a problem, though, especially in parts of Corona del Mar and the Peninsula. I liked what the gentleman who spoke, some of the things he was saying. I'm wondering if it comes back for reconsideration or if we're be done tonight, perhaps we'll require the contact of an owner to be on the, on the job site fence. Perhaps a parking management plan would be at the discretion of staff to answer Mr. Mosher's concern about unnecessary plans or a place where it wouldn't be needed at all. I think there's more work to be done, though, based on the feedback that I've heard tonight and concerns from the dais. And I have one concern still, which is imposing this on projects that are currently being done with a certain budget and a contractor understanding. So I would like to find a way that if this is done, it's very limited to the coastal impact, coastal or older areas that are impacted, and perhaps expansion of enforcement really is, is the way to deal with this. We have people who, our parking enforcement staff, that are constantly looking to cite residents for not moving their car in time for sweeping day, or heaven forbid, going over five minutes on the meter, yet we have contractors who blatantly disregard the laws of Newport Beach, making money from their employers while doing so. And I'd much rather see them follow the rules and be watched closely than a resident who makes a slight error on a, in their daily schedule. So I know sometimes that contractors can be hard to cite, and sometimes law enforcement has to be called out to give support to, to traffic, but I'd be interested in having the chief and the city manager put efforts more towards following the existing rules and to get the message out to contractors that when they're here in Newport Beach, they have to obey our rules.
Ms. Brenner.
I'm, I think we need to take this back to the community, because some of us in our neighborhoods have serious problems and others don't. So I'd like to take this to the Corona del Mar Residents Association, and perhaps the Balboa Island Improvement Association, and the Lido Island Association, those, and the places where we really have the problems, talk to the community about it and see what they can come up with to help us come up with a manageable plan that actually helps in those specific areas where we need solutions. But the idea of a three-year limit on a build, that's something that I could get behind immediately, because we have people, I have people in Shorecliffs that have had five-year construction on the homes that don't look like they're going anywhere, and the owners have so much money that, that no amount of fining is going to solve that problem. That's a problem that we really need to get behind.
We may, and we still have more comments up here, but we may want to think about what we can- what we can come to an agreement on to do, maybe the three-year, or maybe the, and certainly the signage on the fencing, for example, the contact information, and go out to the community. We already have been, staff has been out to the community, but with general inquiries, so maybe with more specificity around some different options on parking management, and considering how we would exclude certain parts of the city. Mr. O'Neill.
Yeah, I'll, here's my motion. So I move continuance of this item, split into two parts. The first continuance is, I'd like this to be brought back to the next meeting with a, that will only address the length of time of a project. Whether it's three years or five years, I'm not sure. I'd like to hear a little bit more. But I'd like that to come back to the next meeting as a proposed ordinance. I would like then to continue the rest of this item until, I don't know, last...
Signage?
Not in my area. And so the rest of the item, to the end of April? The last meeting in April?
Real quick, what suggestion may be, after doing the community outreach, may bring it back to a study session so that we can get clear points before we draft a new language? That might be a way to...
Yeah, and I'd like to just make, okay, that's fair. What I'd like to make sure, though, is we have a timeframe on this, so we don't do so much community outreach that we lose sight of the fact that we need to enact something. And so I guess my suggestion would be then, okay, the remainder of it to come back at a study session in the last meeting in April.
Okay.
I think Councilmember Brenner has seconded.
All right. Mr. Herdman, did you want to speak?
One thing, you guys could probably poke 100 holes in this suggestion, but maybe this should be, maybe the thing that should be considered is lot size. That all of this would apply to properties with a certain lot size, within a certain lot size. Because obviously, it's in areas that are impacted, where houses are very close together, and it's highly dense. So...
Some way to differentiate.
Yeah.
Whether it's lot size or square footage, or some...
Yes.
All right. So staff, do you have that? And then move, motion and seconded, and we can vote. We're going to vote?
To be clear, I heard the question, Mr. Harper. I did not include signage within my first...
That's correct.
My, my, yeah, my bring-back, so...
Feel strong on that.
Well, I'd like that to be part of the discussion about different neighborhoods.
Yeah. And that'd be resolved, then. All right.
And if I may, just interject real quick.
Yes.
I just want to, is there consensus on just a three-year timeframe?
I support that.
I don't know yet. But you can, I mean, I'll tell you what, bring it back with three, and if we at the dais want to amend it to five, we can do that.
Very good.
All right, let's vote.
Motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
All right, Madam Clerk.
Motion for reconsideration is a motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council. Either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Do I see any? No. All right, we have a motion, or we have an adjournment. Mayor Portem O'Neill, you have a memory in, adjournment in memory of a resident.
Thank you. Barbara Swindoll, resident of Little Balboa Island, passed with grace on February 12, 2019, surrounded by family in her home. Barbara was often seen walking around the island for exercise at the local gym, or preparing healthy meals for herself and the love of her life for 37 years, Peter Brandow. She enjoyed living on Balboa Island and was dedicated to the Villa Point neighborhood where she owned property. She had a 30-year real estate career in the area. She survived by her sister, Robin, her half-sisters, Roseanne and Chris, and her nephews, Brian and Raymond. She was recently married to Peter Brandow and will be remembered with love by his family, Chris and Alexis, as well as grandchildren, Bess, Pearl, Gus, and Sierra. Her celebration of life will be held Thursday, February 28, 2019, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the Balboa Yacht Club.
We are adjourned. Thank you.